Good evening, it's seven o'clock, we call a meeting to order. Bailey, would you call the votes please?
Commissioner Langness.
President.
Commissioner Gerard.
Here.
Commissioner Keen. Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Batty.
Here.
And Commissioner Black.
Yes. I ask that you're able to please stand and join us for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda with one change. We have the written findings for the Headwaters Amendment, so that'll come as the new number seven.
Say that again, let's see.
The written findings, Donovan and Hannah's, for the Headwaters land exchange.
Oh, 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 I see, okay.
I'll move that amendment.
Second. Follows in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. Next is a conditional use amendment for eight-two-four-one North Shore Trail Aqua Restaurant. This will be a public hearing and will consider a CUP amendment. Way this will work this evening is that the city will present the application as they understand it. Commissioners will ask any questions that they may have of the city. We'll then ask the applicant if they'd like to say a few words, we may have some questions for the applicant. And then after that, we'll host a public hearing section, we'll invite the public, and I'll give some further instruction at that time. So Donovan, you're presenting?
Yes, sir. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, I'd like to present to you a conditional use permit amendment for Aqua Restaurant in which they wish to expand their operating hours. Bailey, can I get some video, please?
You're good, it's loading.
As you, I'm sure you know, Aqua Restaurant formerly the Lake House, formerly windows on the water, formerly resort built, uh, lake resort area built in the late 1930s, located on a peninsula in between Second, Third Lake. Here it is on your screen. It has a total of one CUP and two amendments already with, on the project. First one coming in 2007. And this, the last one being an expansion of the dock area, which you can see here, an expansion to this dock. What's before you is a proposal, a request to stay open until 12:00 a.m., midnight on Sunday through Thursday, and 1:00 a.m. on the weekend nights of Friday and Saturday. This represents a expansion of the operating hours found in the CUP from 2007, which state that it could stay open until 11:00 p.m. on weekdays and 12:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday and Sunday at 10:00 p.m. And so, seeking to stay open one hour later, six days per week, and, and two hours later on Sunday. The, you know, the current operating hours aren't nearly that. It's, I believe it's open until nine p.m. weekdays and Friday and Saturday until 10 p.m. And my discussions with the applicant, J.J. Malitzky, who's, who's present with us this evening to represent the application, indicates, and also the narrative he submitted, is desiring to, you know, stay open later occasionally for, for special events and holidays. Of course, with the CUP, the word occasionally doesn't really work, and so what you're seeking is that those, those firm time mentions of, of a twelve and one p, twelve midnight and one a.m. The applicant did hold a required neighborhood meeting. Three people, three residents attended. Concerns were raised about litter, vehicle headlights, noise, and potentially seedy characters who would find extending hours appealing. I did poll police reports for the last year, nothing beyond, nothing significant. During the 2017 CUP amendment, there were other ones that seemed to relate to some customers who were over-served. I think that might have been more related to some, you know, previous owners. At this point, the, the, both the neighborhood meeting and I received simply one, one phone call related to this, seems to indicate there's, at this point, obviously this is a public hearing as well, there doesn't seem to be a lot of neighborhood resistance against raising, expanding the hours, which seems to me like they've built up some trust with the neighbors. So at this point, staff does recommend the expansion of the business hours requested to Sunday through Thursday till midnight, that's a total of 7:00 a.m. to midnight, and then Friday and Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. With conditions that all necessary liquor permits must be obtained and noise regulations adhered to, and the general conditions that any future alterations to the use of facility or site would require another CUP amendment, and all the original CUP amendments from 2012, 2017, and the original CUP, those conditions remain in full force and effect. At this point, happy taking questions from the Planning Commission.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead.
A couple of things. One is, what are the hours downtown for the liquor, for the bars?
Bailey, do you have some answers to that one?
Most of them stay open until they're allowed by their license to stay open until one, they have to have a special license to stay open until two. So it varies, they can serve till one o'clock a.m.
Every day of the week?
Um, I'm not sure on that, I can look that up real quick and get back to you.
I should mention that the, the current, Aqua's current liquor license does allow them to stay open until one.
Donovan, on page four, under your recommendation, on condition one, you have the business hours, and it's pretty clear Sunday through Thursday as 7:00 a.m. to midnight each day, but the other portion reads Friday and Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. I assume you interpret that as Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Saturday.
Yes.
And Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to-
One a.m. Sunday. But that reads as though they would be closed on Sunday after 1:00 a.m.
How about changing that language to 1:00 a.m. the following day? Or-
I was asking for what your-
Oh, it's, it's, it's to, you know, base it to 1:00 a.m., stay open Friday night till 1:00 a.m. on Saturday, and-
That's the intent of your recommendation, okay.
Other questions for the city?
The other, the other one is, and maybe this is just a request, is that, is it possible, that was a neighborhood meeting in regard to this, is it possible that the Planning Commission members could be invited to that neighborhood meeting? Any meetings that are had, that are being held for these kind of purposes? Is that out of line, or is that appropriate, or not?
No, it's appropriate, I apologize, it's, I did not send the invitation out to that.
Reason I ask it says, a lot of times, the public does not come to this kind of a meeting, but they might come to a neighborhood meeting and we might get a better feel for the-
Right.
For the public's input.
Although there, there may be an issue on having too many members there as a quorum. We can't have, we can't have more than four members at a meeting, can we?
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, well, well, it could post it, you know, it could post the meeting, but. Other questions? Would the applicant like to say a few words?
Hello. My name's J.J. Malitzky, I'm one of the owners at Aqua Restaurant here in Forest Lake. I'll keep it short and sweet, Donovan, thank you, he's been helpful through this. You know, initially, our goal was, the CUP just kind of handcuffs us a little bit, and I don't feel that the business is even available out there until two in the morning all of the time, or until one, or until midnight all of the time. But the issue is, is that when certain days fall, the Fourth of July week, for instance, there's a great deal of people that have cabins on Forest Lake, and we're sadly removing people and tell them they gotta go and call them last call when we've got thirty or forty people in there. And that's a big opportunity for us as business owners to unfortunately take advantage of the situation. Up there on North Shore, we're ten minutes away from Forest Lake, there's parts of Forest Lake we're over twenty minutes from. It's a difficult location to survive and succeed, so we're just trying to open up any opportunities that we can to make it a little bit easier. The winters are very tough up there, as are a lot of the weekdays. Our goal with this is to, you know, hang onto the customers and the guests that we already have during that evening, to hopefully stick around for another appetizer, or hang through for a dessert, or some of the wedding buyouts, or groom's dinners that we've done. Instead of telling them they have to leave on a Sunday night at 10 o'clock, they can have a traditional evening and, you know, leave at 11:30 or something like that. So our, our goal in this is not to all of a sudden print up a new banner that says, "Great news, we're open five days a week until midnight and two days a week until one o'clock." We, because I think that that would be a, a financial mistake for us, but I'd like it, if we can, to give us the freedoms to, to kind of make that decision based on business and based on those times of year, and based on weekends and holidays especially. You know, we did have a meeting, I see a couple familiar faces here. You know, it wasn't a lot of resistance, but there were some issues that were brought up. You know, one, John, who lives directly across the street from us, talked about, I'm sorry to call you out, but talked about his, you know, lighting, you know, one of our exits, and I did it, I drove right out it and I look in his front window and, you know, my headlights on my Chevy F-150 are going right into his front window. And I said, you know, maybe there's something, there's some type of compromise that we can come to, that we can figure out something, if there's some hedges that we can put, or if there's a entrance only, exit only sign that we can put. I want to compromise and I want to make sure that I'm doing everything I can as a business owner to be living in harmony with my neighbors, and our neighbors, as they do with us, so it's only fair for us to do the same for them. And initially, I had asked to have this available until one o'clock every day, that was our initial conversation with Donovan, with the possibility of two, as Bailey said, you can sign up for that license to have that two o'clock available, let you pay extra couple hundred bucks, or whatever it is. I withdrew that because of the conversations, cordial conversations that I had with the neighbors a couple of weeks ago at the meeting, and I said, you know what, I want to compromise already, I want to give a little bit back, and I understand that there are a couple of concerns, late night, I forget the word that you used, but, you know, unruly customers or whatever it was. You know, I want to make sure that the neighborhood's still safe, that the neighborhood's still quiet, that the neighborhood is still as good as it currently is. So what I then said is, how about if we compromise a little bit? And I brought this to Donovan, said, "Let's present to you the board to go midnight five days a week and then one o'clock on the weekends." I was hoping that that was a fair compromise, I don't think that the residents even knew that yet, but they're learning it today. As for that, you know, a couple other things, the, you highlighted all of them, we had talked about it before, but, you know, there was trash, there was litter, there was a few things like that, you know, a couple of isolated instances with, you know, I, I don't believe that we're part of us, or part of what we're serving, and I think you kind of confirmed that a little bit, that it was previous residents. And then one thing that was brought up was a, there was a cop, there was a call out on the police scanner that said, "I've got issues, we're chasing a guy from Aqua Forest Lake" and everything else, while he had came from one address, got held up at Aqua Forest Lake as he was on the run, and then had nothing to do with us. They just found, we were a closed establishment at that point, so I wanted to come, come on that too, so. Other than that, we've done everything in our power as a business to try to succeed. We've changed menus, we've changed uniforms, we've changed hours, we've changed brunches. You know, I started with a full suit and we realized, I'm in Forest Lake, I shouldn't be that guy, we, well, we wear jeans, we're comfortable now. We have done everything in our power to make it happen. Unfortunately, taking the earlier part of the day isn't going to give us the business that we need to survive out there, so our goal is to hopefully try to get a piece of the later night business for people that aren't necessarily looking for, for lack of a better term, a hole-in-the-wall bar where they can come and, you know, get a, a good cocktail and get a nice appetizer and get some, you know, chef-driven style food, even if it's 10, 10:15, 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. We want to give the city and the community that opportunity for them, and then obviously to, to help us survive too, so. I'm going to continue to make sure that litter is taken care of. If there are concerns of the neighbors, I want to be forthright with those and head on and be transparent with them, as I am with you, and do whatever it takes to continue the harmonious, you know, living that we're doing, and that we have been, that we have had, so. That's about it. If you guys got any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, and so how this works, does anyone who wish to speak to the issue, we ask that you come up to the podium here, state your name and address for the record, and tell us your thoughts on this application. So, once everyone has been heard, we'll close the public hearing and it'll come back to the commission for a decision. So at that, we'll officially open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this issue?
Good evening, John Winkler, my address is eighty-two-twenty North Shore Trail North, right across the street as J.J. mentioned. So, first off, a couple weeks ago, yes, we had a meeting to talk through with some of the local residents, and I don't know if there's meeting minutes published from those discussions, but there were certainly some issues that were talked about. J.J.'s brought up some of those issues here as well, but there is some concern, my, from myself, as resident in the, in the Willow Point neighborhood, and some, from some of the other neighborhoods, neighbors that I've spoken with as well in the neighborhood. I know they've submitted emails on the, on the, on the topic regarding some of the issues that I'll talk about here. So I don't know if my letter's been submitted, so I'll take the time to read through this here, just to express my concerns, and I've got some commentary at the end as well. Okay, so, and some of this is historical, but it provides context to where we are today with, with Aqua, with, with the Lake House, et cetera. And really, the non-conforming commercially zoned property being discussed today on Willow Point in Forest Lake has had a lengthy history and has been brought in front of the Forest Lake Planning Commission and City Council several times. Much of this history remains relevant to understand the agreements made between the City Council, the businesses that have occupied or presently do occupy the property, and the Willow Point residents in their, in the neighborhood. So back in 2008, a decade ago, when the restaurant was formerly called the Lake House, the Forest Lake Planning Commission and City Council evaluated the expanding the non-conforming commercial property to include additional parking. The proposal was to convert a residentially zoned parcel in close proximity to the restaurant to a non-conforming commercial property to address parking concerns. Key discussion points and decisions relevant to today's topic of expansion of the hours of operation include, from the meeting minutes back then and, and still present today, several Willow Point neighbors spoke at the meeting expressing their disapproval due to expansion of commercial property in the residentially zoned area, concerns on increased noise, light pollution, traffic, and potential erosion of property value. Concern was so great that petitions were submitted by local Willow Point residents opposing the Lake House from purchasing and expanding the residential property. And the conclusion from the meeting minutes, and this is a quote from the Planning Commission, "Since the zoning in this area, single-family residential and the restaurant is non-conforming use, to not allow an increase in the non-conformity, and the importance of maintaining the sensitivity to residential environment." An additional point in the consensus is, and I quote, "Felt that if the surrounding property owners and restaurant came to some type of resolution to resolve parking issues, the committee would be open to proposal and reviewing the plan." So the takeaway is, to J.J.'s point, we want to make sure that it works for the community, the residents in Willow Point, as well as the restaurant. It's important both, right, because of the fact that this is, these are people who are there to enjoy the lake and their community and the Willow Point area. So following the 2008 initial discussions, there have been follow-on requests, as we talked through tonight, for expanded hours of operation, requests for increasing the amount of live bands, the addition of overnight boat slips. Neighborhood Willow Point residential owners, myself included, have continued to express the concern with continued expansion of the use of the property, primarily due to the same quality of life issues previously mentioned. On the contrary, when there have been opportunities to help support the restaurant with requests that minimally impact the neighborhood, minimally impact the neighborhood, such as expansion of hours on Sunday for brunch, you know, myself and, and some of the other Willow Point restaurant residents that I've spoken with have been supportive of these changes. So we're trying to, to find a, a happy balance there. So key messages in the consensus I would like to specifically call out, maintaining the sensitivity of the, to residential environment, and resolution agreement between the restaurant and the surrounding property owners. So I have had police walking through my yard, J.J. mentioned that, searching for patrons, I can't claim that they were from Willow Point or from the Lake House, but it's happened. I, you know, the trash is there, beer cans, bottles, et cetera. And while there haven't been any official police records, I can tell you there are incidents. You know, last summer, literally last summer, I was sitting in my front yard, having a campfire, and I saw a car pull out, and, from the parking lot, and I had to intervene when a car pulled out from the parking lot, stopped forty yards down the road, and a man physically abused, and threw a woman into the ditch. I had to run over across two yards to go in and intervene and stop the, the abuse. Myself, my wife, and my kids were, were all there enjoying a campfire. I fully expect that these and similar incidents will increase if the hours of operation are expanded later into the evening. Changing from a restaurant, going after bar hours, there's, I'm sure there's thousands of facts out there as to what happens with the clientele, and I know, you know, J.J. and, and his management team will do the best of, to manage this, but you cannot control patrons. You can limit them, but you're still, there's only so much as a owner that you can do to, to prevent these things from happening, so. In conclusion, as residents at, at my address, eighty-two-twenty North Shore Trail North in Willow Point Residential Neighborhood, for the past eleven years, I'm strongly opposed to the expansion of hours of operation later than the current hours of operation due to the aforementioned items, you know, noise, light pollution, traffic, crime, bar crowd, and all the issues that come from that. At the time of purchase in 2013, it should have been well-understood by Aqua what the limitations are on the non, on the commercial non-conforming property in a residential lakeside community neighborhood, and they purchased the prop, property with those limitations in place. I strongly oppose changing the property usage without, without the agreement of the, or resolution from surrounding residential Willow Point property owners, as we had talked through in previous Planning Commission meetings and City Council, and again, I strongly oppose the matter. Question?
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the issue?
Good evening, my name's Jeff Garrettson, at two-two-four-one-zero Emin Avenue North. We've lived there for thirty-five years, we're right across the street also. We don't get the light traffic or anything, but I want to speak to how good J.J. has been as a neighbor. Everything at Aqua has been immensely better than Willow Point, or the Lake House, or some of the other establishments that are in there. I am opposed to the longer hours because of the future residents of the restaurant, not because of J.J. If there's a way that the cup could be extended for him, I would be all for it, if it's not extended to the next resident, because the next resident could be back to a Lake House or a Willow Point type establishment, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Young, ninety-nine fifty, one-hundred ninety-ninth Street North, and I am not a neighbor. But I, I, I understand the concern, the conditional use goes with the property, does not go with the neighbor, or does not go with the owner. What some past councils and past planning commissions have done has been to include in your conditions for a conditional use permit, a yearly review. And that way, if there is a new owner that goes back to the bad old style of the, the Willow Point days, which I took many, many complaints on, that gives you the opportunity, if you include in your conditions a year-to-year review, to, to deal with some of those concerns. The establishment as it is today is not at a price point or at a style that many of the, the really bad issues that, that, that I dealt with at the time are, but I also under, understand the, the fear of the neighbors, if a conditional use permit were to go with the property and, and, and they, that it not be the same style and management team. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address this issue?
Hello, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for being here to say your piece. Just a couple of things, you know, the, the parking we knew was an issue. Since we've opened, we've done complimentary valet to do our best to curb that, and for the most part, it has succeeded, you know? There's a lot of times, you know, Mother's Day coming up, we're going to have a super full parking lot, they're going to be parked in like sardines, we're going to have four valet people out there circling cars the entire time, and we have to do what we have to do in order to survive those days. So that's one of them. You know, understanding of the limitations, you know, Jen, I appreciate you saying it, and everybody appreciate the nice things you said about us as a group, that means a lot to me. You know, we're going to continue to, no matter what time, if it's eight a.m. in the morning, or if it's 12 a.m. in the morning, we're going to manage with integrity, we're going to treat it both honesty, we're going to make sure that we're serving people. You know, I do not want to send somebody out who's had too much to drink to hurt someone, whether it reflects on me or not, or, or business, that has nothing to do with it. The fact of the matter is, is my liquor license, my whole, my soul, my heart, my integrity is on the line, and we make that happen. You know, we have cut off people on multiple occasions at, I've done it at 3:00 p.m. on a Saturday, we've done it at 9:00 p.m. on a Friday. We do it because it's the right thing to do. I've given people home, rides home in my own car, I've given, our valets have given people rides home, we let people leave their automobiles, we've taken a boat home, I had a valet come and pick me up from their house. We do whatever we have to do for the safety of the community. You know, in, in the abuse thing, it's a horrible situation. I can't imagine that happening in front of my, I got a five-year-old, can't imagine that happening in front of him. It's an isolated situation, I hope it was no cause of us. You know, to me, a person who's going to physically abuse a spouse goes far beyond what they did at a restaurant that night, there's something deeper and darker issue there, so. You know, the, the, I am familiar with the CUP that, you know, it would continue and it would go forth to another person if they were to purchase this. I hope that that would stay with it, I don't want to go anywhere. My kid's going to school here, my wife and I just built a house a couple years ago on Chisago, we love the area, I love the city, we've got four other locations here now with the grill. I don't plan on going anywhere soon. I don't plan on going anywhere soon. However, if stuff happens, if a situation arises where there's a collapse in economy, there's a whatever, 150 reasons that, there might be a reason that we have to get out. Obviously, this increases the possibility and the value of our brand, you know, of the Aqua brand. If we were to ever sell a location, it would probably go with the Aqua brand, which would then take that price point or that, you know, it would, it would stay with the place. That is not a goal of mine, you know, it's funny, as somebody said, "Oh, you guys are closing, you're selling because you opened up the grill." It's just like, we've been selling for five years since we opened. I don't want to go anywhere. This community has been phenomenal to us. I want to continue to give to the community as it's given to us. And I think a big, a big point of keeping the, again, I forget what the quote was, but the unruly customers and guests. Initially, we, at all of our locations, we've priced, I'm not trying to be, try to be careful how I say this, we've priced them out. Our food at the meat market is more expensive, our pizza is more expensive, the grill sandwiches are more expensive, Aqua is obviously more expensive. We're not going to have that person that sits at our bar and crushes 10 Coors Lights for $1.50 each. That is not who we're going for. We are a food establishment first, and we will always be a food establishment first at all our locations, and it's drinks second. You know, I mean, our cocktail lists are 10 bucks, our Jack Cokes are 7.50. We don't attract that unruly customer, and even if we do, and we do have happy hours, you know, we do $2 off drinks and things like that, so now your $10 drink is $8, you're still paying 5.50 for a Jack Coke. My point is, is typically, the unruly customer seeks out that inexpensive drink because they're going to be consuming lots of them. All of us come from that style of management, we've all worked in those restaurants and bars, and the reason we're doing what we're doing is because I don't want to be a part of that. I don't want to be a representative of an establishment that, you know, promotes that and that is that, and that has abuse or fights or any of that on a regular basis. I do not want my name on any of that. So, whatever your answer is today, we're going to continue to do what we do with integrity and, and do our best to keep our neighbors happy and stay in the good graces of the city. So, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to the issue? I'll ask one more time, does anyone else wish to speak to this issue? Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for a decision. Donovan, I'd like to ask a question first on CUP, aren't they all annually reviewed as city policy?
It depends on whether that condition is included. There's no requirement within the zoning code that they be. More lately, I have not, I mean, we can look in the existing CUP, you know, I can...
I think it said that...
See if there is, like, from the, like, for the... But, but due to staff, you know, resource constraint, staff restraints constraints, we don't, I have not been putting those in there. But here, actually, from 2007, number 10, the conditional use shall be reviewed by the city on an annual basis. So that is, that is in there.
And issues, if there's a lot of issues, we could require the applicant to come back and address...
Right, there's a formal process to, you know, seek correction, and if it's not corrected, you know, issue a written notice to correct, if it's not corrected in 30 days, then the zoning administrator can revoke the conditional permit, the holder can, of course, appeal it and it goes to the Plan Commission, and then the Plan Commission, you know, decides whether they want to, you know, deny or sustain the appeal.
And all these commissions from the prior are still in effect, except for the hour change?
Correct.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Well, the question, were you going to verify the hours that the other, the downtown are?
Yeah, so per the Minnesota State Statute, any on-sale intoxicating liquor can be sold from 2:00 AM to 8:00 AM, the days Monday through Saturday. And again, that would require, it's usually 1:00 AM, but that would require the 2:00 AM permit, which the state regulates, rather than the city, we just have council approve it. And then it can also be sold until 2:00 AM on Sunday, depending on what the city code establishes. And our city code says, with an on-sale intoxicating liquor licensed, in a Sunday on-sale license, they can sell between the hours of 8:00 AM on Sundays and 2:00 AM on Mondays. And it also, I'm not sure about this because I don't have a legal background, but it also says that the premises in conjunction with the sale of food can stay open from 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM, but that might be something for the city attorney to review.
Okay, but what about Forest Lake? I mean, what about the other, the ones that they are competing with? What are their hours in comparison to what they're asking for?
Normally, 1:00 AM, they stay open until...
Locally?
Or they're allowed to. Yeah, mostly on the weekends, I know Vanelle's is open until 1:00 AM, they might close earlier during the week, but we don't have any regulation against that license-wise.
I do, if I may, I'm sorry. I know a handful of owners in town, and they are seven days a week available until 1:00, and seven days a week they have the, with the council, city council approval to go until 2:00, any day of the week, on Sundays, including Sundays.
Other comments?
The one, can I continue?
Go ahead.
Sorry. You know, this Willis was intended to be a neighborhood bar, and I think that that's where it got started, with the restricted hours and that type of thing, and, of course, over the years, it's grown, it's grown well beyond a neighborhood bar, you know, to a very commercially nice restaurant. And I think that that possibly creates the problem for some of the neighbors, is that it's the growth, and even though it's much better run, I think, than it was in the past. So I think it makes a little bit difficult decision to keep it growing if it's going to add to problems from being the intended original use of a small neighborhood bar, in my opinion. The other thing that concerns me is that, is that, you know, the review, the annual review is fine to put in there, but I just don't think it's ever done around town. I don't, and maybe it is without our knowledge, you know, but, but it doesn't seem to be something that is, is done on a regular basis. Maybe there is a log where everybody that has a required annual review gets a checkmark if they get reviewed, and I don't know how you do that.
I believe that there was some sort of regime to do it, I don't know how regular, but I believe that they were done. In this case, I would, I would do them only in response to complaints. You know, it's not stated, you know, how many would, you know, would trigger that annual review, but, you know, it is a leverage for the city to, you know, enforce the conditions of CUPs.
I have a couple of questions for the applicant, if that's all right? I think your current dinner is served till 8:00 PM every night?
No, so we...
Excuse me, JJ, can you...
Yeah, come back, sorry.
...show all our adoring public out in TV land.
You got it. Hi, Mom. If she's there. We do, so we're actually going to be, during the week, be Monday through Thursday, we are open until 9:00, and what that means is we technically will seat until 9:00. So if people come in at 8:45, they can come in, get our three-course dinner, do what they do, and then they would have to be out by ultimately 11 o'clock at this point. Sundays, we seat until 8:00 to, the average dine time is, you know, an hour and 30 to two hours, depending on the size of the party. So we seat until 8:00 on Sundays in order to have people out by 10:00 PM. And then on the weekends, we seat until 10:00, it's the same thing, in order to have people out by midnight. In the summertime especially, we do seat up until those last moments, and we unfortunately have to usher well-behaved dining, food-eating patrons out at those specific times in order to stay within the CUP guidelines.
I think I was misunderstanding your website, where it has the times at the top. Are you planning to extend your kitchen hours?
Yes.
Should this pass?
Yes.
To...
Depending on those days, I mean, we're going to dip our toe in the water, we're not, as like I said, we're not going to immediately be open until midnight, five days a week, and 1:00 AM both days a week. Our goal is to do a limited kind of bar menu, you know, doing our fresh mussels, doing our bruschetta, bringing in a couple of late-night fried snacks and things like that, from a, you know, during the week, like a 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock, 9:00 to 10:30, something like that, 9:00 to 11:00 during the weekend. We would do like a, kind of start this little, you know, happy hour menu, if you will, from like a 9:00 to 11:00 o'clock, and attempt to, you know, get those people that are hanging out at the house to hop on the boat and to come over for a snack. But again, just as I stated before, it's going to be food-driven, you know, this is going to be about the food and about the experience and the cuisine, because that's who we are and that's what we do, so.
The last question I had, I guess I'm a little confused, I thought you had said at one point when you were talking that one of the primary purposes of this was so that you could stay open, like, the Fourth of July?
Yeah.
And it was more limited, but I'm hearing that it, that you have some limited opportunities that you really want to seek, but you also want to stay open, is it year-round, or what are you exactly seeking?
I'm seeking, honestly, more revenue, and I'm seeking easier years, because the difficulty to survive at that location with the size of that rent, you know? I wish we were paying the rent when it was a family bar, neighborhood spot. Unfortunately, you know, John had brought up that in 2013, when we purchased the restaurant, we knew what we were doing. It's the first restaurant I've ever owned, I didn't know what I was doing. I came with capital girl background, I came with bar-bar backgrounds, I've done all this stuff, and I've learned through thick and thin, bumps and bruises, and bloodied for more, and it's been a very, very, very difficult road. I am seeking the ability for us to get through a year, in all honesty, with profitability, you know? In Forest Lake, at that location, it's been extremely difficult for us to survive. We've opened other restaurants in order to keep us alive at that spot with the meat market, thank goodness, by Pizzeria, hopefully the grill, things going on in White Bear. Again, we're going to dip our toe in it and see if it's an opportunity. I am certain for a fact that during those, for instance, Fourth of July hours, New Year's Eve, a couple other holidays throughout the year, weddings, when we do a handful of buyouts throughout the year, during those times, I guarantee, and I'm certain for a fact, that we will want to use, hopefully, the amended CUP time guideline and take advantage of those opportunities. What I mean dipping our toe in it, we're certainly going to try a handful of days, you know? Does it make sense to be open until, you know, midnight on Mondays? I don't think so, I really don't, you know? Tuesdays, I don't know, Wednesday, Thursday, maybe, you know? But again, how we do it typically is, let's try an hour, let's see what we can do with an extra hour, or let's give a, you know, happy hour menu, or a little limited bar menu, instead of closing at 9:00 during the week, we'll do it from 9:00 to 10:30 and see what happens. Maybe it takes off, and maybe we start getting, you know, additional business and great feedback from it, and then it's a good idea. And honestly, in a perfect world, I hope that we are open past 10:00 o'clock and people are in there from 10:30, Sunday through Thursday. I'd be a fool, I'd be lying to you if I, if I wasn't, if I didn't say that. But we're also not going to, the payroll at that place is insane, the amount of money it takes to run that kitchen, the restaurant's humongous, bartenders, minimum wage at 9.65. I need to make sure that it's a financially sound decision in order for us to make this happen, but sadly, I can't roll the dice until the city approves it and gives us the opportunity to try. You know, you'd stated the competition that we're up against is open until 1:00. Is a person going to drive 10 minutes out of the way if they want to grab two beers and a snack when they know that we close at 10:00? No, they're going to go to Friar Tux, they're going to go to Vanelle's, they're going to go to somewhere else because they know that they can stay longer. It's making it difficult for us to survive and to get that person to make that journey around the way, so, yes.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Chairman, if I may, you know, we really got kind of a unique or strange situation here, we've got a commercial use in a predominantly residential area. I think we're fortunate to have an operation like Aqua in the city, it's a well-run restaurant, and I think if anything we can do to help them survive and stay with the city, I think, I think we ought to do that. Yet, I think we also have to recognize that there are neighbors there, and we do have to do our best to make you compatible with that neighbor. You're the oddball, you're the use in the neighborhood that really doesn't belong there. I'm glad you're there. I think it, with the buildings, the investment of the building there, the location on the lake, it's a wonderful use there. I think because it's Aqua, and because of the clientele and the food you serve, the potential for non-compatibility, trash, rowdiness, non-compatibility with the neighborhood is less because of the way you run the operation, because of what it is. I think it's better as an upscale restaurant than as a small neighborhood bar. I think the small neighborhood bar that has happy hour throughout the whole day is likely to cause more problems with the neighborhood than, than your establishment. So I, I'm in favor of expanding your hours, I think we, we see you ought to do what we can to help you survive, to give you that flexibility, to cater to your patrons and your customers as you need to, but not at the expense of the neighborhood. And there has to be a happy balance there, and I'm not sure exactly where that is, but I think the city's doing the best we can. I think the suggestion of the yearly review of the conditional use permit, inviting the neighbors in, might be a good idea, and I don't know if we do that in December, if we do that in July, or when we do it, but it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to do that in this application. I think we ought to also remember that we have a liquor license involved here, and the applicant has to go before the city council on a liquor license, and I know there's conditions attached to a liquor license. So if the restaurant gets completely out of hand, if there are police reports, if there are continuous problems with the neighborhood, I would think your liquor license would be in jeopardy. I would think that we would come to an end to this right away. I think this decision on the land use is something that's been decided long ago. This operation has been there for some time. I think we're fortunate to have Aqua here, they have mitigated the issues with the neighborhood through the operation they have, and Mr. Chairman, I'm for making a motion to go ahead and approve this tonight, subject to the conditions that the staff has recommended. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and discussion on the motion?
Are we adding that condition of an annual review specifically, or is because it's already in there, it's in there?
It is in the, it is in there, I guess we draw attention to the staff that perhaps we ought to for sure follow through with that and do an annual review. You know, and my only comment is, I've lived within walking distance of Aqua for 25-plus years, and I went through the owner that wasn't very polite with the neighbors, and the neighborhood and the lake spoke with their checkbook, and he folded the shop that fall. So I don't think the applicant's interested in having that happen, but it is a small community, and I think the same thing would happen if things got out of hand there, so I have no problem with this. Any other discussion? Eric?
I guess I have some concerns, not specifically with Aqua. I don't live... I don't live far from your business either, down the road on North Shore, and I was probably one of those shady customers at Willow Point back in my early twenties, when I...
Seedy.
When I, or seedy, seedy, whatever it was. I was probably one of those wild, rambunctious ones that, you know, caused problems for neighbors. I've grown out of that, and Aqua has grown out of that from what it once was, too. And I think for the better, but my biggest concern here is that Aqua may not be Aqua at some point. In the relatively short time I've lived in Forest Lake, 20 years, it's been three different restaurants, and in the next 20 years, it could very possibly be three more. I hope not, but it could be. And whatever we do on this, it's going to carry forward. There's, there's no turning this back, unless the next owner says they want less hours, and you would be foolish to come forward to the city council and say you want less hours on your CUP. And I, I tend to side on the side of freedom when we look at property rights and these sorts of things, but this, this is a residential zoning, and I very much remember most of the city council conversations back when the CUP was presented, and I remember some of the conversations with the neighbors. I don't remember all the detail, but I do remember there was lots of concerns about it turning into what it once was. And that's why most of these conditions are there. And I would, I would caution the commission to question if those conditions help make Aqua a good restaurant, a good neighbor to what is an entirely residential area. I'm open to giving some flexibility so that they have a functional business that's profitable. I, I think we should consider some other options, though. You know, maybe first we say that instead of opening this up throughout the whole week, we allow it on Friday, Saturday, and on holidays. And that would probably open up a significant amount of added hours for them, and potentially may mitigate issues during the week. You know, for the typical person that works Monday through Friday, that might prevent headlights later at night for them to work. I also have some concerns, and I wanna, and I vaguely remember, you know, 15 years ago, when that building was built and redone, and the original CUP went in, I remember some concerns about the, if this was a bar later at night and not serving food, that potentially they would have more police activity, that naturally comes with bars, and I think that's true. And I don't necessarily think that matters if you're buying a $1.50 Coors Light, or if you're buying a $10 margarita, problems come with alcohol. The, the issue for the city's standpoint, I think, comes into play with, you know, our police force is probably focused in town, and it's a little bit of a height to go all the way out to Aqua later at night when they really should be focused in our business districts as those businesses are closing. And I, I think if we do this, we can't change it. And so I'm open to, you know, some of that stuff, but I don't wanna go as far as the staff recommendation necessarily is here. I would recommend, if the commission disagrees with me on that, though, that you modify the language on the annual review basis to be, "A conditional use permit shall be reviewed upon complaint," or something to that effect, so that if there was a neighbor complaint that that triggered that review to happen, versus just staff doing it annually. So, those are my comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm, just wanna state a couple things. First of all, I don't, the look, you know, the fact that there is a restaurant there, in my mind, is no longer an issue. It's, it's been there, it's established, you know, there's been the conditional use permit, we've, we've offered, or, you know, we've passed amendments related to that. To me, that's not an issue. And I, just maybe a point of clarification here, but I've sat through many, many planning commission meetings from that side of the fence, and I can tell you that probably on half of those, they involved the renewal of liquor licenses. Not because I had anything to do with it, just happened to do, that just happened to be on the agenda. And I don't know what, I didn't look, do any research to find out how Forest Lake handles renewal of liquor licenses, but is it, is it annual, is it every two years? How often is a liquor license renewed in, in Forest Lake?
It's annual, and they're approved by council. We also take, you know, do all the memos for the compliance checks, too, so if they have one or more failed compliance checks within the past five years, the council does look at that as well.
As far as the, I, I'm in favor of, of Aqua remaining or, and/or being a viable business entity in that location. You know, I'm not for just giving them carte blanche, but I, I guess I feel like with the, the system that we have in place, with the annual review and the annual renewal of the liquor license, I think we have in place the, the checks and balances that we need to allow this kind of, you know, allow the additional hours to, to be part of their conditional use permit.
Just one other comment. I guess I'm opposed to having them variable, you know, just on holidays, or just on weekends, or, or just on anything, you know, it's, it's too hard to police, I would, I would think, you know, that, you know, so they're, on the Thursday, they're open at midnight where the ordinance says they're supposed to be closing at 11:00 o'clock, and then they say, "Well, no, it's National Apple Pie Day, and, and that's why we're open," or whatever, you know. So I think you get into so many, I'd, I'd like to see us do it the same Monday through Friday, and Fridays, or Monday through, Sunday through Thursday, and then Friday, Saturday the same. And, and make sure that it's not confusing in regard to, that we are talking about Friday night to, or Saturday morning and Sunday morning, as far as the, the 1:00 o'clock is concerned.
Yeah, I mean, I just think to be on the safe side, we need to make sure that that's in the language of the motion, and I think you can handle that administratively. Any other comments?
I'd call for the question.
Hearing them, we'll call the question, all those favor sing of understanding, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
If tensions, which carries, thank you all for participating this evening on decision. Next is a zoning code text amendment to allow small wireless facilities. Again, this will be a public hearing, they consider a zoning code text amendment. Donovan, I believe you're presenting, and I hope it's not all 23 pages of dry language that you provided us.
That's awful.
I like to keep it interesting.
I thought his presentation was pretty good last time.
Well, first I'd like to introduce, this is a zoning text amendment, this is where the, the planning commission gets to make a recommendation, and the city council makes the final decision. And this is one part of a larger effort, has different components involving a comprehensive right-of-way ordinance, a co-location agreement, and schedule fee amendment. Though, right now, we wanna just begin with the zoning code text amendment, I should say, let's begin with some education. Small wireless facilities are basically an expansion of our wireless broadband network, and we're not talking about the large towers with this, with this, with, with these, with these standards, referring to much smaller facilities, and these augment the, the large towers, and are connected with, through wireless, you know, or cable. And they, they're much smaller, of course, than the towers, antennas, and require the cable and fiber optic lines, and basically each provider in the area has a, you know, it, you know, has, has the, has the antenna. And you have different examples of what they look like, so they can perch on, on poles. Here's, could be the, you know, more traditional...
Palm tree.
Wireless one.
It's like a palm tree.
You might have seen this one, Mike, by the TJ's, by, by West...
West Palm Beach.
West Palm Beach, yeah. West Palm. And then, but of course, they're, they're much smaller than the towers, and they function as part of this whole network, and are connected by the cables, as I described. And so, you know, these, the small, small wireless sites would be here, attached to, you know, wireless support structures. And what, you know, there's a, is a real economic and just technological reason why the telecoms are moving to small wireless facilities, because they could provide kind of a saturation of broadband expansion in areas which really, really needed. So far, I've been in contact with different telecoms who've been kind of waiting for the state to adopt those rules. This is, you know, was passed in the last state legislature to allow these, you know, as a permitted use in commercial industrial areas. And if a city may choose to, they can then apply conditional use permit standards for residential or historic areas. And that's kind of a small background. And then, you know, if, looking at, this is, you know, what this could happen within a kind of a gridded neighborhood, you know, much higher density than most areas in, in Forest Lake, where the brown stars do represent some, what I can imagine would might be saturation of small wireless facilities, provide that broadband expansion. You know, something that's come up in council is the opportunity for these to be kind of a substitution for the extension of cable in lower-density residential neighborhoods. And I don't, I'm not sure, you know, I believe that, you know, telecoms aren't coming to that yet, but that could be an outgrowth of this, this, you know, permitting, permitting these in residential areas. But I believe, you know, first, we're gonna see them by the interstate, along Broadway, you know, over by 12th Street Southwest. And here is a, I thought I'd make something of a little game for the, for the, for the planning commission. All right, who can spot the wireless facility in this photo? Gentlemen, there, the dark hair in glasses.
Do we win something?
The dark hair.
Is it me?
If that's me. It's on top of the light pole.
There we go.
The minute that he said hair.
I don't have any, sorry, I don't have any candy for you. But so, I mean, in, you know, more urban areas, they would be just, you know, part of something that, you know, would, would probably not be that obvious. You know, this is, of course, not, not Forest Lake, but just giving example how they, they can be somewhat unobtrusive. And here, another example, where they can be just somewhat outfitted along with the poles. And, you know, it is, does represent change, but, you know, I think at some point, they're gonna be, you know, similar to what we, you know, see, you know, satellite dishes or, or other things that have come into our world in the last few years, it's become something of common sight. And so basically, these have some, a range of something between 1,500, 1,000, 1,500 feet for a single facility, so you can imagine like a radius of up to 750 feet around a single wireless, small wireless facility. And, and so what we're looking at today is simply what's, what's small wireless facilities and wireless structures within public rights of way. We're not going on to private property. Right now, we're considering those, something like you would, like a satellite dish. And state statute, you know, the, kind of the, in some ways, the enabling legislation for this doesn't contemplate that, it simply, simply relay it to public rights of way. And so that's what we're focused on tonight. I'd like to stop for questions, for anything, for the, just initial introduction into the technology and just kind of the general context.
Donovan, you showed lots of pictures of what probably is arguably nicer styles for these, but is there anything that would stop one of these facilities from going into our neighborhoods where developers, and quite frankly, our current residents that bought into those neighborhoods, spent lots of money to put all their utilities underground so that there isn't wires hanging up, from stopping one of these companies from coming in, putting up a wooden pole 30 feet into the air and popping these big, huge electronic boxes on the top?
At this point, state statute does allow, you know, local land use controls to limit the number of wireless structures within the right-of-way. Nothing, we contemplate nothing that actually limits it on, on private property, if a private, you know, property owner wanted to...
I'm referencing in, in the right-of-way, in neighborhoods where...
Yeah. Right now, that's not, in the current CUP, you know, conditions, is a strict prohibition on those. You know, there is, you know, and we'll, we'll get into this further, but, I mean, there is a recommendation of a 900-foot separation on those, but, and I, that's a really good question, I think I'd like to turn it over to, and that, you know, turn it over to Bridget, our city attorney, because I think if I ask, because frankly, I don't know the answer to that, and if we ask our, our, our representatives from Zayo and Verizon here this evening, I'm sure they'll say you can't, but I'm not sure if that's the final answer. I mean, no disrespect, but...
Well, I, and I guess if, if we can't, what types of regulations can we put on it? 'Cause, 'cause I understand that the state legislature, in their infinite wisdom, came up with this idea to force it upon cities without figuring out all the details, believing that to us. So if we can't do it, what in these regulations will force these wireless companies to put the, the most attractive style in those types of neighborhoods? So instead of a big, giant wooden pole dumped in the front of somebody's yard that has a nice neighborhood without poles, to having it be a decorative metal setup similar to like the, the ones you showed pictures of?
Well, there are, I guess what the, in the language, the concealment elements would be a general term that are applied to these, and you can see that with, you know, for instance, the, the, you know, the, the palm tree there. And right now, my, my opinion of those is that it doesn't seem to really take, take away from the issue. You know, we are looking at, you know, some, some language to really promote the undergrounding of utilities, and that's, that's related to more, you know, the electric or gas, or, you know, mostly electric and telephone, though we haven't finalized any language there. But it's, I mean, I think state legislature, you know, the state legislative text says you may, you know, put it as a CUP, but doesn't, I mean, we're still talking about small wireless facilities, and by nature, they really can't, themselves can't be underground, and of course, the cable... And of course, the cables that attach to the larger, you know, the macro towers, those will be buried.
Yeah, I guess for me, it's one thing if they go down, we'll say, North Shore Trailer Highway sixty-one, where there's existing wooden poles, and they pop it up on the top of one of those. I think that's very different than if they go in any one of our newer developments and pop up a giant wooden pole at the corner of someone's property, which is how I read it in the packet.
Yeah.
They could just pop up one of these wooden poles, and I'm, I'm not seeing, and I guess that's why I'm asking you, where is the, the aesthetic standards that we have in, in areas like that where people are going to be, quite frankly, upset? I live at the top of a hill in Cranberry Heights, the very top of a hill. It's probably ideal. It's probably the last place I should be telling these wireless companies, but it'd be an ideal place for them to pop up a wooden pole and put one of these facilities up there. And I can tell you, I would be absolutely furious if that happened on the corner of my property. And I can't imagine any of my neighbors would like it either, because when our neighborhood was built, there was huge investment to put the power, the cable, the phone, all of the utilities underground. If I lived on North Shore Trail where there's power lines up, I wouldn't care if there was another utility box on the top of a power line necessarily. I also think it matters significantly in our business district, particularly where the city has spent an enormous amount of money on Broadway Avenue to just pop up these poles in the right of way without any standards. And I'm not seeing the standards in here. So I'll keep going back to that if we need to, and if we don't have the standards and this isn't ready, then that's fine. But where, where should I look for the standards of specifically those two places?
Okay, well, we can dig into the.
Hold on, I'll see if I got any other questions, any questions. Donovan?
How would this be any different than applying architectural design standards to a, you know, commercial or, you know, any kind of a building project that's built here in the city of Forest Lake? I'm just curious about how this would be different. I'm amazed that there aren't, there isn't something in here about aesthetic standards or whatever you want to call it, whatever term, worm, term, term you want to use to describe how it looks.
I mean, there are, there are a few that relate to, and of course, there's always, there's also a maximum size they can be when they're located, you know, six cubic feet. The, they must be of compatible color and design with the existing pole. They, you know, currently, there's written, it's written as a prohibition on the placement on decorative city structures. That's one concern with, you know, Mr. Littlejohn, who's here, I think he'll talk about this later. And so, that's something that, you know, we need to, you know, I think we'll address. And so, it's, it's not that we, there aren't any aesthetic. It's just that, it's my, it's my, it's my opinion that sometimes when you try to hide something, you make it more obvious. And I believe that right now, we're something in the infancy of this technology, and what we might say now to try to hide it might be, you know, just outdated in three to five years. And we're always trying to catch up on how to, how to hide it. They're going to, they're going to be there, and they're going, you know, they're going to look like these, you know, these, you know, cylinders or blocks. You know, there's, and there's also language to, that the, you know, exposure of the wires and cables must be minimized. But I'm certainly open to, you know, Plan Commission and perhaps something that, you know, we can look and do further on any of these things that are concealment elements.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Barry.
One go ahead.
Okay, so this, this ordinance that we have, is this strictly applying to public right of way?
Correct.
So it's not private land? This is, this is not applied to private land?
Correct. And.
So if I have an apartment building, and I want to put one of these mini towers, or whatever they call them, on top of the apartment building to serve the apartment dwelling people, that's not covered by this?
Correct. What will occur, though, that if it goes above thirty-five feet, you know, the, it'll trigger the tower conditional use permit rules. And so, you know, many of these aren't of that height. They space them in a way, and they're, they're meant to be pretty much on towers with that three sixty sort of, you know, ability to receive and send, and, you know, send signals. And so, they're not really, you know, I've asked about, you know, what about placement on nearby buildings? But, you know, buildings kind of obstruct, they provide the height, of course, but they also obstruct, you know, that, that three sixty radius.
So in Eric's concern, where if a developer is developing a new area, they could put their own little tower on, as part of their development up front and have a mini deal?
Correct, correct.
And because they would, they'd be on their private, they'd be on a private, wouldn't be on a public right of way at that point. So they could do kind of whatever they wanted to, keeping in mind the heights and those kind of things.
Mm-hmm. Mike?
Let's see, I, state law has been passed. I mean, the legislators have amended the state statute to require that we allow this to occur in the, in the rich right of ways, and it's subject to our regulation. Well, surely, there's other cities that have addressed this. I mean, we're not the first city to address this, are we? Or is this a brand new issue?
No, we're, I mean, we've, many, many cities rushed to get their, their rules in by the end of twenty seventeen.
I see. Okay.
And Bridget has been working with another community that's, that's ahead of us in this, and, you know, I had some original recommendations. She added a few more that, you know, that were reflective back and forth, you know, with, with telecom representatives to.
Okay, sure, sure. I mean, that's the best way to do it, is to work with other cities that have already addressed the issue, and perhaps the League of Cities have, have come up with a model ordinance for this, for municipalities?
That was the basis of, yeah, that's the basis of our regulations, but we've got, you know, moved forward to be more, you know, add the separations.
We really don't have a choice here. What we've got to do is, we've got to move ahead and, and address this issue, because it's coming, it's before us, and we've, we've got to amend our ordinance to comply with the state statutes that require us to do it. And yet, we have to try to do it in a way that it addresses some of the aesthetics and some of the things that we locally are concerned about.
Right, right.
So full speed ahead, I guess, just keep working with, with other ordinances and other cities and come up with the best solution that we can. I, I think this is almost a staff issue, and the city attorney issued a draft and wordsmith an ordinance that, that complies with our state, state requirements. The one question I had with reviewing staff recommendation was, you had, the staff was recommending that it be a permitted use in certain, some zoning districts, and a conditional use in mostly, I think, in zoning districts where there was single family zoning. And I wasn't real clear on the difference between the two, in terms of why we would go to a conditional use. In my feeling is of the more we can, not tighten, well, the more we can apply the ordinance according to state statutes, so that the industry knows that they're dealing with the rules and regulation that the state has put upon us, why go to a conditional use permit? Let's just, let's just make it a use that, through licensing, permitting through the city, that they just have to follow the rules, and it's done. I mean, I, I'm, I'm not convinced, my mind, that we ought to go to conditional use permit for a single family zone right now. I, I understand your issue with putting a single pole up and putting it up fifty feet in the air and having it stick out like a sore thumb, but, you know, most, most neighborhoods have streetlights, so they're probably hanging on a streetlight. And, oh, by the way, you, I also noticed in your staff report that we're not just granting them permission to put it on someone's structure, they'd have to go to Excel Energy or wherever the, whoever owns the pole fixture to get permission to put it on their, their structure. So I, I kind of view this as an issue that staff needs to continue to work with, and with the city attorney and wordsmith, one that, that meets the state ordinances and requirements, and we, and we proceed with it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, let me just address one thing you're saying there. The, the state statute states that it's, you know, that these wireless facilities, small wireless facilities shall be a permitted use in all zoning districts except those that have single family zoning and historic districts.
That's the state law?
Yes. So then, you know, we define the ones with single family zoning as the conservancy, agriculture, rural residential, single family, MXR one, MXR two, and MXR three. So those are the ones where, you know, as a city, we're saying we want to, we want to, you know, regulate those with certain conditions. And so, essentially, the conditions are pretty similar between the two. And, you know, with the exception of, in the residential ones, that we're looking for the, any poles to be, new poles to be located at, you know, near residential corners, like, you know, utility poles are currently located, or those green boxes as well, they try to put them into kind of at the T, you know, where the right of way meets, you know, two property corners. So I just wanted to clarify that one.
One more question on these poles. We have one antenna per provider, but how many, I was under the impression you had a pole for every provider. Am I wrong on that? Are we going to be able to stack multiple antennas to keep it down to the minimum? Or are you going to get everybody, every provider coming in line to put poles with one antenna on it?
Or their own antenna?
Well, there is a co-location agreement that we, that will be required for any, any entity that wants to put a small wireless facility on, on a city pole. And, you know, the way, like, I don't know if there's any other options than just simply, you know, one, you're basically, I don't know that you can do more than one. I think it would, it's kind of not in their interest, because they need to certify that the weight, you know, can, you know, the weight of this wireless facility will, you know, be, be supported by the pole. And it seems to me the, the working method is to simply replace the pole, so they know exactly what they're putting in, what the footing is, and have, you know, engineers sign off on that to actually, and then, if you would have another, as a practical matter, I think it really, it must, becomes much more difficult. I don't know if, you know, if our co-location agreement is, that, which hasn't been adopted yet, does allow there or not. I haven't studied closely.
So you're telling me is it possible that I could get each of the current four major providers on a corner, boom, 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 boom? If they were three hundred feet apart or something?
Could be, but I think, I think our, I think our assembled experts will probably, you know, answer that one. I think, I think, there's a technology, technological reason there that I'm not aware of, I think we'll get an answer.
Thank you. I'll wait with a, with a deep breath for the experts. Donovan?
So what, so what's driving this? I mean, is this the direction that, it just, as an architect, I've grown up with less is more, and this is the opposite. This is more is.
Yeah.
Less. And I, it seemed, there seems, I'm struggling with some of the intuition, you know, the intuitive side of this. And I'm not trying to second guess the engineers. Obviously, there's, there absolutely has to be something financial that's driving this.
Well, I mean.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, we're, I don't have a landline anymore. I mean.
Right, yeah.
A lot of people are just using their cell phones and.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I know that. But I, but within the, you know, within the confines of that communication technology, it'd just be interesting, be interesting if we could see five years down the road.
We, I mean, we can't, well, we can, I mean, five G is coming. I'm not sure exactly what changes that'll bring. I mean, but essentially, you know, it's what Commissioner Black says. I mean, I assume that you two gentlemen in your pockets have car keys and a cellphone. I mean, and the cellphone does, you know, that, then you're, that's a pretty common thing. And so, there is the need for more capacity, because we're using the phones like people used to use their, you know, their desktop computers. And, you know, so there's a strong need, and really, it's how do we accommodate it? And then, also, is that really the state legislature forced our hand by making this a permitted use in these commercial industrial districts? I mean, we could, we could do nothing, and they're going to apply, and then we have no tools.
Yeah.
You know.
Oh, I want to give you tools. I'm not, I'm not for doing nothing. But I, it's just, it's, it's such a game changer that, because there's, I mean, just put in fifteen minutes here tonight, you know, all the different concerns that have been raised, that, you know, it's questionable whether they're, we're addressing those. Is it, is it, excuse me, is it a positive thing for Forest Lake to have these, I mean, in terms of service to the residents?
To my twenty and twenty-one year old, it'd be mandatory. It's not an option.
But I mean, is it, is the theory, the theory is, is that the towers that are here now don't provide strong enough service to cover the whole city and all of the residents? So these mini ones are needed in order to enhance the service? Is that what we're dealing with? The purpose of it?
It's really to, yeah, expand the capacity within where it's mostly needed. I mean, I don't think the actual, at this point, the actual extent of service will be expanded. In many cases, like, you know, Commissioner Langness's concerns about in his neighborhood, I don't think we're there yet, we're going to see it. I mean, it's, I can't say when, but, I mean, just what we've seen so far, the initial conversations have been focused on the areas where, you know, we have the greatest intensity of commercial development, you know, along Broadway, along Twelfth, along the interstate, so that serving our, you know, it's serving visitors, current businesses. You know, if people's calls are dropping out, I mean, that, you know, wouldn't be a reason why someone just stopping for gas, you know, if the holiday won't return. But, I mean, I think it has a long-term detrimental effect on, you know, if, on residents, on businesses, if we can't just keep abreast with the, this current technology and what, what people desire in a community, which is the broad use of their phones for many different purposes.
It allows people to more easily work from home as well, because they had a commercial service available to residential areas? Is that true?
I think in some areas, I'm not, I'm not as knowledgeable at the technology to understand, you know, what extent can people, can, you know, replace cable, for instance? But we are seeing many homes, you know, without landlines, and, you know, I'm not sure what's, you know, I'm not sure what speeds, you know, are we talking about increased speed, or is it just simply just the ability to, to, you know, to, to, you know, use the internet to make the calls?
So Donovan, given this part of your presentation, do you want to go through the ordinances, or do we want to hear from the experts, or how do you want to go?
I'd like to, I have just, I did put together just the basic, you know, description of what, what, you know, what's in, what's in our proposed text amendment, which includes, you know, some modification of the tower definition, so that state statute says that you can't regulate under fifty feet for a small wireless, wireless structure within the right of way. So this carves out that exception. So it, so this, the underlying language is that language had to be proposed to the current tower definition in the zoning code. And then, also, similarly, with, because the comprehensive right of way ordinance is in the city code, and, you know, it's, this is not, that's, that will go directly to city council. But I did, you know, it's part of the context, and that's why it did include, you know, our current draft of that. But also, there definitely, this whole series of definitions within that comprehensive right of way ordinance that is in, in city code, and, but we did bring a couple of those into zoning code, so, just for, you know, ease of, more convenience for, like, people who were, for instance, applying for the CUP. So we do define a wireless support structure in small wireless facilities. And, you know, so these are the same in the comprehensive right of way, but it's ordinance, but it's also meant to, you know, just, you know, describe what these are. And then, and then we go into these conditions, and they're essentially, they're essentially the same as conditions, both, for both the commercial industrial areas and residential areas. commercial industrial areas and residential areas, with, of course, the exception for residential areas, a conditional use permit's required, you know, so that, a trip to the plan commission. And then with the other ones, it's simply administrative review, a series of right-of-way permitting. That's part of the comprehensive right-of- ordinance, so that, that would be administrative review. And so placement is on utility pole or wireless support structure in the right-of-way, or if it's in residential area near a lotline corner, as we discussed. A series of conditions relate to public safety, so the wireless facility can't interfere with public safety communication, not obstruct the right-of-way or any light from a utility pole, ensure that the structure can support the weight of the facility, that it be two feet from a sidewalk trail and 12 feet above the ground. Of course, the ground, you know, you know, having a height minimum, so it doesn't, isn't obstructing any kind of, you know, vehicles, or, you know, if they pulled over or something. Two feet from the sidewalk does, relates to the ability for the city to, you know, do sidewalk reconstruction or maintenance, also provide some capacity for snow storage. And also proposed is a separation, and this refers to basically distances so that we don't see a, a strong proliferation of poles within our commercial and residential areas. And the 300 feet I measured basically is a Broadway block, so I imagine, Broadway Avenue West. So I imagine that, you know, if we saw just one, you know, one pole, additional pole, you know, with, along Broadway, along, you know, main thoroughfare, that that would seem reasonable. And also understanding that there is, you know, something around, you know, the 500 to 750 radius for them, for individual, so, you know, each, each, say, each telecom might need one whenever, you know, 1,500 feet, so, you know, knowing that there are only, you know, a few providers, that having the one for every 300 seems reasonable in the commercial areas. And also, this is, again, this is just within the right-of-way. You know, this is not appro, this is not a separation for, you know, any kind of structures outside the right-of-way. Then next, we have, it can be no larger than six cubic feet, and this is again from the state statute, and then we're saying it can't extend more than three feet beyond the utility pole, and a maximum 50-foot tall pole within the right-of-way. No attachment to decorative poles, compatible color and design with the polar structure, minimize exposure, you know, you know, visibility of the wires, cables, and hardware. And then just in general, relates to, you know, conditions relate to getting the proper permits and the pole owner's consent. For instance, all along Broadway, those are city-owned poles, the blue decorative poles, within a county right-of-way. So you have, you know, layers of, that different jurisdictions have that permitting. And then, and you have to be a telecom to actually have the wireless facility, and then comply with all local, state, and federal regulations. And so, you know, roughly, that's, that's what we have for that. So I would like to pause for any questions, and if you want to have our guests speak as well.
Can I ask, first thing, Mr. Chairman? The part about banning it on decorative structures, what, did I misunderstand that? That it says that you can't, you can't utilize a decorative light post of any kind to put these on? Is that true?
Yeah, currently, the, the language is the city may prohibit small wireless facility attachment to decorative public utility structures. And that's, that's-
They're owned.
I'm sorry?
They're owned. The city's owned?
The city's owned. You understand there are other, you know, there's other poles, there's other-
Yep.
And there were, you know, decorative structure, they're, they're designed to be of a, of a piece, you know, a little more than the, the light pole with the, with the, you know, mast arm.
Dennis?
Well, I, I was just, it seemed, I don't want to belabor the point, but I noticed that you didn't address the wiring and stuff at all in this summary here. Is that, just, we don't really have a handle yet on exactly what that, I mean, is it some kind of single coaxial cable, or something that handles this, or is it, I mean, is, you know, you see these towers, and they have the whole bundle of wires, you know, going up the, one of the legs of the tower, and I, I'm just curious. I'm assuming this would be something less than that.
Oh, certainly, yeah. They, they are, there is a minimal, there's not a high, you know, amperage or voltage line running through there. I mean, our language does say that, you know, to the greatest extent possible, minimize exposed cables, wires, and other attached hardware.
Yeah, well, I guess it's that phrase that concerns me, that isn't-
Right.
That's not a measurable, to the greatest extent possible is not a measurable standard. It's not even identifiable. I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just stating-
I know, you never are. But, sorry. But, no, in the whole decorative pole thing, you know, I, I, Mr., I'm sure Mr. Littlejohn here was going to, you know, argue against that one, and that's also, you know, state statute is, does, is saying that you need to make a reasonable accommodation.
Yeah.
And so it's, again, that's not always, you know, kind of ambiguous terms, but I think in some ways, it's, just for maintenance issues, it's in their best interest to internalize a lot of that. So, I mean, I think some of that, you know, it's a practical matter, you know, it won't be a big concern.
Just to tap on what he said, in regard to the connection of these, are these, are these wireless to wireless, or are they fiber optic to the, are they connected to a main tower by fiber optic cables?
They're all connected.
By, by cables?
So they're not, they're not air-to-air, that's-
Tesla didn't win. These are not wireless towers.
Okay.
Mike?
Yeah, well, one quick comment, then a question. I agree with Dennis. Anytime you're, we're writing standards and we're using terminology like "to the greatest extent possible," or in another case, you say the city may prohibit where, small wireless facilities attached to a decorative public utility, when you're using the word "may," or when you're saying "the greatest extent," we're on a slippery slope, and I don't know what wordsmith, you know, we can do to tighten that, but either it is or it isn't, or performance standards that are written, open-ended like that, are only going to cause interpretation problems. My question, though, on number five, you refer to a city standard co-location agreement. What, what is such a thing?
Yeah, so that, that is actually, it's kind of a lease agreement, essentially, you know, with the, you know, made, you know, executed with the small wireless facility owner to allow for the installation.
So that's something that we have right now?
No, no.
Oh, that's something that would be-
It's another component of this, yeah.
I see.
We have a draft, city engineer, city attorney, I'm sorry, has put it, put forth-
It'd be kind of their plan for what they're going to do with the city, and where they're going to put these facilities?
No, I mean, we have, basically, it's a basic template that, that we use, and, you know, that we have some individual, you know, for some individual cases, so unique cases that would change, but it'll go before city council, and city council will, you know, adopt it. But that hasn't happened yet. And that's, that's another one of these things related to the, you know, comprehensive right-of-way ordinance and the fee amendment, and so those are all part of city code.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to understand exactly what, what it, it's, it's a plan that the wireless company want, who wants to put up these antennas, would come in and describe what they're doing?
No, basically, I mean, there's, there's, there's two parts of it. I mean, there's the small wireless facility, and there's the whole construction permitting. You know, often there's going to be excavation, and there might be, you know, right-of-way obstruction as they do construction activities. There might be disturbance, which they might, you know, do directional drilling for the cables.
Okay.
So these sort of things. So that's all construction.
Sure.
But meanwhile, the city still, you know, is permitting something, you know, private, you know, entity to actually occupy a city right-of-way. So it needs to be some sort of lease document to put conditions on that, that, you know, that involves the, the cost, which state statute, you know, MAC puts a, sets a limit on, on that lease amount per year. But there's a number of things that relate to, you know, removal during, you know, city, if city was doing maintenance, say they're painting all the light poles, well, we'd want to, you know, have to say, we want conditions, say, you know, we give you, you know, a month to remove that, or, you know, month warning, remove this for a week, we're going to sit, you know, we're going to paint the light poles blue again.
So the-
It's a whole, it's a whole level of detail that's, that's beyond the zoning code, and it's more related to kind of the financial, you know, lease arrangement between the telecom, the wireless facility owner and the city.
And do we require something like that right now from Excel Energy or Midco?
A franchise agreement.
Franchise agreement, I see.
Yeah.
I see. All right.
One last thing. When you said that, that this, for the future, could, and maybe these two will elaborate on that, take the place of cable TV, for example, is that, is that what you said? I guess what?
I think it's, it's the city's hope, because we just, we're fine with our cable franchise agreement. There's, there are lower densities of the city that we're just not seeing cable extending to it, and we're not, you know, we're not expecting the higher density in those areas anytime soon. But meanwhile, people don't have this something that's, you know, becoming, you know, a modern convenience that's coming close to a need, especially if you, you know, trying to work out of your home.
But the city actually has a partnership with Midco, do they not, to do the LA TV and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, the franchise, right. But the franchise agreement doesn't, doesn't compel, you know, the, the, you know, the cable provider to extend, you know, the cable everywhere in the city.
I understand. But this would compete with that eventually, very likely.
I mean, I think that's, that's the city's hope, but I haven't heard that, you know, at this stage, because I think it's, that's in the future, and right now, they're seeking just, you know, to expand their broadband capacity in the areas where it's, where the greatest need is, in these, you know, commercial, you know, the main commercial areas of the city.
So are there fees that are attached to the service that the wireless gets that would be similar to the fees that are attached to the Midco situation, for the, that the city gets?
The city gets, it, the, I haven't memorized the lease amounts. I mean, it's, they're, they're around $150 a year, or something like that. I mean, it's, it's not a lot, but, you know, it could add up after a while, but, I mean, it's, it's not like in the, the city's great financially to do it, but it is something that does provide a good for the community in the end.
I'm sure it's going to move on to the next part, or are you finished, Doctor?
That's your, that's your pleasure.
You have more to present?
No, no, that would be not to your pleasure for me to keep talking, I think.
All right. This is a public hearing. I know it's, but with the applicant, which I believe is Verizon an applicant?
No, I am-
No, they're just a participant.
I'm, staff is, staff is the applicant here. We, you know, this, we commonly hold a public hearing during a proposed text amendment, so that's, you know, that, I think that would be the-
All right, perfect. All right, so this is the public hearing. So we're the last one to let us work. He's at, we asked that you come up, state your name and address for the record, spend a few minutes telling us your thoughts on this application. If the applicants wish to speak, feel free to take a few more minutes. When we have heard everyone who wishes to speak, we will bring it back to the commission for a decision or a recommendation. So with that, we'll officially open a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to the issue?
My name is Jay, is this on? I can't hear it. My name is Jay Littlejohn. I'm an attorney with Moss and Barnett in Minneapolis. With me in the room also is Karen O'Brien. She's a realistic consultant for Verizon Wireless. Our firm represents Verizon Wireless, as I have since 1988, Verizon Wireless and its legacy companies. I've been working with cities around the metro, and in fact, around the state, on ordinances like this, at first with macro towers, and now with small cells. There were a lot of questions. I frantically made notes, but feel free to interrupt, so that I cover all the questions that you have. There's been a lot of water under the bridge in the course of my career, and I've, and I've come to learn an awful lot about these facilities as a result of that. The whole reason that staff is doing this, as, as Mr. Hart mentioned, was because the legislature realized how ubiquitous these devices have become. I mean, everybody's got a phone. Some people don't have a wired phone at all. It's not generational either. Somebody mentioned my 20, 21-year-old kid. My parents are both 79. They turn 80 this year. Neither of them have a wired phone. They're wireless only. But those phones are not just used for making calls and sending texts and taking photos. They're also used for things like, I have a CPAP machine at home. My CPAP machine communicates wirelessly with the network directly, without going through my phone at all, to, to the sleep clinic that monitors my sleep patterns to make sure that I'm, that I'm sleeping as I'm supposed to. My Uncle Doug has a heart monitor that does communicate through his phone. His pacemaker has a wireless heart monitor in it, communicates through his phone, goes to his heart clinic, both for periodic reading and for real time, in the event that something, you know, feels wrong in the course of the day. So there was a question asked about working from home. These devices can be used as wireless hotspots. You subscribe, your, the data connection on your phone then works through your Wi-Fi connection on your computer. Yes, you can work from home directly. So the question about whether this service will, will better enable people to work from home, the answer to that is yes. It's not providing cable, but it's providing a substitute for the data that goes on the cable. So it's not cable television programming, but it is data. And remember, everything is data now. If you make a call, if you're talking to somebody, it's not an analog signal anymore. Everything's converted to ones and zeros. Everything becomes data. The data is now beginning to overwhelm the system, and that's why these small cells are needed. You asked the question, what's the reason for this? So we don't have to build a whole bunch of much taller towers. These small cells allow us to increase capacity without the need to build taller towers. I would, I don't know this, I haven't done a check, but I suspect that all the Forest Lake water towers have cell site antennas on them. I, you probably know that off the top of your head. If they're near where people are, they will have, they will have small cell facilities on them. You know, towers are being built, rather than put a 100 to 200 foot, a 100 to 199-foot tower in neighborhoods, these small cells can go on facilities 50 feet and shorter, usually they're 25 to 35 feet, provide service within a radius of, you know, 300 to 500 feet. The, the technology does differ from company to company. One of the questions that's asked is, you know, how are these connected? We use a hybrid cable that has power and fiber optics all in a single line that goes up the antenna, or up the inside of the pole to the remote radio unit. It's a small box. The most important part of the gear is connected by fiber optics back to one of these macro sites. So there's a, usually a building or equipment cabinets near the, the regular site, and that's where the rest of the equipment is housed. That's why these small cells can work with such a small antenna, such low power, is because the, they all serve, it's sort of a hub-and-spoke system. It's not really radiated out in that direction, but that's kind of the way it works, is the fiber optic lines communicate back to the switching equipment in the macro cell, and then that goes out to the rest of the world. Let's see. Oh, a question was asked about, about performance criteria and how to deal with that in neighborhoods, and as staff pointed out, there still is a conditional use permit process that staff is recommending in your ordinance, so that, you know, so that this commission can make sure that, for instance, a pole is, is put on the property, where the property corners are. You know, I have a, I have a power box in my front yard off to the side, off in the, where our two property lines meet. Some, similar kinds of conditions would be expected, but certainly aesthetics. I mean, if it's a neighborhood that has, you know, decorative street lighting, one of staff's suggestions is that, or recommendations is that no new poles be put up if there's something within 300 feet, and that's completely consistent with state law, by the way, that while the city doesn't have the power to limit, to require the facilities, that is, the antennas and the boxes be separate by a certain distance, you certainly have the ability to say, you know what, if we already have a pole there, don't put up another pole. If you, if there's a pole within 300 feet, go to that pole instead. And that's, you know, we do, we have no objection to that. There's an issue, and I- There's an issue, and I, I put some information in the letter to show where the definitions, you know, weren't properly used, and I've discussed this with Bridget Nason, and she, you know, she and I are still in discussions about it, she largely concurred with the concepts. I just got the staff report yesterday, and so I did my best to dash out a, a response, so that after talking, you know, with Ms. Nason, I, I wanted to make sure there was something we could give to this commission, so that you understood what our, what our issues were. Let's see. We really have three issues that are in my letter, and a fourth actually that was raised by Mr. Black, that I should have put in my letter, and they're all, they kind of fit into two categories, the way that your, as, as Mr. Hart pointed out, there's, there's three aspects to this, there's the zoning aspect that you're all working on today, there's the right-of-way aspect that we'll continue to work on directly with the city council and the city attorney, and then there's the co-location agreement, which is basically the, the lease, that gives us the, you know, gives the city the right to tell us, this is how much you're gonna pay in rent, and this is what you have to do if we're gonna do any work, and you have to carry this much insurance and all that sort of thing, and that's all being done also directly with the city council, so it's a little bit different in this circumstance, because the zoning ordinance that's in front of you isn't really the whole picture, there's, there's, you know, two other aspects that aren't really zoning-related, and I suspect that's why the hearing, because it's not zoning-related, on the right-of-way permit wouldn't come before you, but there are certainly standards in that, in that right-of-way ordinance that apply to these facilities and how far they should hang out. So back to my four issues. The first one is this issue of decorative poles, the statute is unequivocal, and I've gone so far as to quote the language, that sure, the city can require that we provide designs that accommodate your decorative poles, what the city cannot do under the statute is outright ban, you can't, the city has no power to say you can't go on a decorative pole. On the other hand, you know, we put these facilities, my clients put these facilities in St. Paul, downtown St. Paul, across from the Landmark Center, on these gaslight poles, they've hidden the, the remote radio units, the boxes that are on the units, that basically like the size of an old-fashioned tower computer we used to have in our homes before everybody started using laptops. That box, we put them between banners on the poles, so that you don't see the box, what you see are the, you know, welcome to Forest Lake, or Forest Lake as good as it sounds banners to, again, kudos to that, I just love that motto. Anyway, so they put banners on the sides of them, you know, I was looking at the, at the, the blue lights along Broadway here, and there's already a, a sort of a cylinder that protrudes up above the pole, and it might require a complete replacement of the pole in order to do, in order to, to build something that's integral in the pole, maybe the box goes in a little bit bard, larger base, and the, and the antenna is just an extension of the, of the cylinder that's there already, that's entirely possible. Those kinds of reasonable accommodations, absolutely, the statute allows it. Outright bans, not so much. So that's the first issue. The second issue is this question of spacing, and again, I've suggested some language, and the reason why there's two sections in every provision is that your zoning ordinance treats commercial installations with one set of criteria, and residential installations as a second set of criteria, but the criteria are identical, except for one instance, so I, I still included the language, but it's, it's unnecessary, unnecessarily duplicative in my letter, because the concept is, when it comes to spacing, yes, the city can again say that structures can't be right next to each other, but not facilities, in fact, one of the commissioners, or maybe two of them, said tonight that they're interested in putting multiple facilities on a single pole, so you wouldn't want those facilities to be 300 feet apart, you, there may be instances where you want those, those small facilities to be on a single pole, instead of one here, one there, one there, one there. That's, that's, either way is fine, but the, the placement of facilities, separation of those facilities is banned by the state. The placement of the, of new poles, not. So if there's already a pole there, the concept is, yes, you can, the city can adopt ordinances that say, if you have a pole within 300 feet, you have to use, use it, presumably it's our pole, but it might be an Excel Energy pole. We have these facilities on Excel Energy poles, in fact. When those poles are in the right-of-way, this ordinance would still apply, even though we won't have a co-location agreement with the city, but, you know, Excel Energy, they have rights, they have installations in the right-of-way, these are still small facilities in the right-of-way, it's just that our agreement, the rent for it, will go to Excel Energy. By the way, the FCC adopted regulations that only allow a certain amount of compensation to investor-owned utilities like, like Excel, and that amounts to somewhere between 10 and 30 dollars a year, not the 150 dollars that the legislature is requiring in the, in the statute. So decorative poles, spacing, the, the other issue that we have, concern I have, is over this, this two feet from the sidewalk, there are lots of sidewalks in town that have poles that are right there, they don't interfere with pedestrian traffic or bicycle traffic, and, you know, as long as the facilities, that is, the antenna and the remote radio unit, the box, are, I think the, the standard is 12 feet above ground, that, there's really nothing to be served by that, I mean, there, there are poles that have, you know, again, just on the drive over, I noticed that there's, there's transformers and crossarms and all kinds of things on poles that protrude over the, the top of the sidewalk, but they're way up in the air, they don't present a problem to any pedestrian traffic, and we'd ask that you revise that, so that that two-foot limitation is eliminated, and so that the facilities can go wherever there are existing poles, because that's after all, what we want to do, is to be able to use those poles. Not talking about having it protrude out two feet, I'm suggesting that we should be able to use facilities even when the pole is, might be within two feet of a sidewalk.
So do you want, you want to be able to put new poles within two feet of the sidewalk?
If there's no pole there, yes, but if there is a pole there, no.
Why?
If there's no pole there-
Something so close to the sidewalk, I don't want to be, I don't mean to be argumentative, but I mean, just from an aesthetic standpoint.
The, these, these small wireless facilities have a very short range, and so, so let me, let me rephrase, there may be circumstances where there is a location that's not within two feet of the sidewalk, that, that's entirely possible, and we don't really care, we just want, we don't want to have whole swathes of the city eliminated, because there's a sidewalk that goes from the property line to the curb, and there's no place to put in a new pole there, and there's no pole available there. If there's already a new pole there, you're, you're, we're already prohibited from putting a new pole in, in the first place, if there's something within 300 feet, so it's only those circumstances where there is no pole within 300 feet.
Okay, I see, I see your logic.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, the fourth issue, oh, was raised by Commissioner Black, and I touched on it briefly, and that was the, does it really make sense for the city to require conditional use permits, even when the site, even, just because the district happens to allow residential uses, even though the area is not being used for residential purposes? I'm thinking specifically of agricultural districts and the mixed-use districts, where, yes, the district is there, but why would you want to face 10, or 15, or 20 conditional use permit applications for facilities on existing poles in the right-of-way, that are already managed through the Public Works Department, and there's no residents involved? We recognize, I mean, one of the questions that was raised was, what do you do about new poles in residential districts? If it's, if it's single-family, the legislature already said, single-family zoned and used, yes. Our contention is that for mixed use and for agricultural uses, where they aren't used for residential districts, the fact that you can still have a house there, in, somewhere in the district, should not be a justification for requiring a conditional use permit in those areas. Now, there were a lot of questions that I probably didn't get anywhere close to answering all of them, but I'm happy to do so.
So we don't allow this public hearing, but public go give and take, but commissioners, any questions, comments?
One question, what does the word co-locate mean?
Put next to. Yep.
Can I offer a correction for Mr. Littlejohn? The, the RMXR, 1MXR, 2MXR, that's a single and townhouse mixed residential, it's not commercial residential mix.
Oh, it's single and townhouse?
Yeah, 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 so we do actually have mixed, like mixed use, you know, general mixed use, or downtown mixed use, so this is, these are strictly, you know, residential zoning districts, that's strictly meaning, but up, density's up to six dwellings per acre.
Okay, it's residential, but, and it's, some of it's single-family, and some of it's multifamily, but it's-
Yeah, or attached.
Yeah, okay, the, the point still stands, I guess, for agricultural uses in those areas where those, where the area is not used for single-family residential, based upon what the statute language is, and that is, the, it's a permitted use, it, by state law, it is now a permitted use everywhere that's not single-family and, or historical district, and by the way, the, the statute doesn't say you have to require a CUP in residential, although I recognize that most planning commissions would want to do that. You don't have to do it if you don't want to, the, you may decide that the city has enough controls in its right-of-way administration to do this, the, the, the desire to have the facilities there should govern whether, you know, how far you want to go in regulating it. These companies will decide where to go based upon, in some measure, based upon, first, customer need, but second, how easy can we put them up? And if it's, you know, if there's gonna be a whole lot of conditional use permit hearings here, or go down the road and it's, put them up, you know, you gotta, gotta do the easy projects first, I guess.
Other question?
You had noted that, that change of 900 feet in distance to 300, and your rationale was because it varied from the commercial to the residential, so does state statute specify that it has to be 300, or could we move both to 900?
State statute says that, that you may not limit the placement of facilities, not facilities, but limit the placement of, yeah, facilities, may not, but you may with respect to poles, but all of the limitations must be reasonable. So what's unreasonable about 900 feet is if you have four providers, and each wireless facility, each small wireless structure is defined as any structure that is designed to, or actually is, used for supporting a facility, so as soon as somebody puts a wireless facility on a pole, that makes that pole a small wireless facility. If, as soon as that pole's a small wireless facility, if somebody needs to be any distance shorter than 900 feet away, they have to either go on that pole, or they have to go 900 feet away. If for some reason they can't go on that pole, either because you don't, it doesn't meet the, the conditional use criteria, because it looks too cluttered, or, or it's, you know, whatever the reasons are, could also be that there's interference, because there are too many carriers on there, so it not, won't physically work there, that requirement that you go down the way where the signal won't be received where it is, would be unreasonable. So we know to a fair degree of certainty that at 300 foot, we'd rather see 50 feet, because we found that you can be across the street from a facility, and still be in a, in a place where it makes sense to have a pole, maybe there's no light there across the street, down the block, that, we wouldn't have that option. Oh, by the way, whenever we do these facilities, my client does, they oftentimes replace the poles that are there, which is not great if you have all new poles, but it is great if you have poles that are in need of replacement, oftentimes, we will work with cities to build structures that are dual-use, they support a streetlight where one is necessary, one is, we wish, you know, the city always wished they had a streetlight there, we usually find these things out from the city staff, from the public works folks, when we get in there, and we put a pole, put a pole up at our cost, to support our stuff, but also to provide your lighting, or your signage, or your, you know, traffic light, whatever the, whatever the city's need is, did that answer the question?
Kind of, I'm, well, who came up with 300? That's not in statute, right?
Right.
There's, there's no number there, has a court?
This is so new, there, we have yet to have any litigation over this, over this statute.
What's the maximum number any city that you're aware of has passed?
300.
That's the most?
Yep. I think that might even be in the Leagues ordinance.
No, that was, you know, I, I basically took the measurement of a, of our city block along Broadway, and said, it'd be reasonable to accommodate one per block, you know, one, one new one essentially, and that's where that 300 came from.
And again, that works fine, 300 works fine, it doesn't work fine in a residential district, especially if you're looking for, to be able to provide service to the residences in there, so that they can work from home using their wireless hotspots, or have their CPAP machine work.
You say it does not work there?
It will not-
300 feet is too far there?
No, 300 feet is fine, 900 feet is not fine.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the application?
Wasn't expecting to, but just a question that came up while I was here, gonna be retrofitting, putting new-
Excuse me, sir, could you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Patrick Hedy. Just had a question on if you're gonna be retrofitting poles, or putting new ones up, how, as technology becomes obsolete, how are they gonna be disposed of? Is that gonna be a, I don't know if this is a city question for you guys, or city council, but the cost of, yeah, disposing those, as technology does keep progressing, and they do need to be changed out, how is that gonna be taken care of?
Any clue, would be like an abandonment type issue?
I believe so, I mean, I think that's, I don't recall if it's currently addressed, but as far, yeah, we, I don't think we've addressed it so far in the, in the conference of right-of-way, that might be actually in the co-location agreement, you know, but, you, because you're referring to actually the abandonment, not like recycling of the old material, right?
Uh, as it becomes not useful, is it gonna sit there and rot away?
No. That, that's a good, I mean, that's a valid concern. Sure.
Absolutely.
I'm assuming that the city will follow the League of Minnesota Cities co-location, they have a, a standard co-location agreement form that's, that they publish for all the member cities, that particular agreement requires that if we don't use it, and you don't want it, because most of these will be dual-use facilities, they'll have a antenna on it, but they'll also have your city light on it, so if you don't want it, we have to take it down. With, so-
So if it's just your pole?
It's just our pole, and we quit using it, we have to take it down.
So does that apply to, what about somebody else's pole, and taking stuff down, is that, is there?
That's regardless of the carrier, right?
That's, that's in the standard co-location agreement, yes, it's not just a Verizon policy, it's in that agreement that the city is going to, plans to require that all of us sign an agreement with the city that requires that sort of removal if you're done using it.
So it isn't just our pole versus somebody else's pole, that, that the co-location agreement, that determine, you know, whatever you call it, end game strategy here, is the same whether it's your pole, or it, you're sharing with somebody else, or using somebody else's pole, is that right, Donovan?
I'm not certain if it's, if it's in, for instance, currently if the, if it's required, like if the city does require that for an Excel pole, it sounds to me like the Excel does have that.
Yeah, that's in their franchise agreement, I don't, that, franchising is, that's, I'm just a, just a zoning lawyer, I don't know anything about franchising, that's a, that's complicated.
Actually, I know in our franchise agreement for Excel, that we do require, basically they're doing like a sublet, you know, if they're gonna put anything non, you know, electrical utility-related on a pole, that they require city approval, so I think it's something we, we will address, as far as, you know, not, not having that sort of, you know, cluttering of old facilities.
Well, and certainly if Excel Energy has a pole up there, and we have our stuff on there, and for some reason, they have to take their pole down, our agreement with Excel Energy, I can tell you, requires us to take our stuff off the pole, and they remove it, I mean, there's no, we don't have any, you know, once we hang our stuff on there, we get to stay there, our use is always secondary on Excel Energy's, on all the investor-owned utility agreements, so if they take it down, we have to go down too.
Mr. Chairman?
In this, this business of the agricultural land use, and, and how that's handled, how,
can we finish up the public hearing?
Oh, sure.
We still got that open.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Try to keep some, sort of. Anyone else wish to address this issue?
I like, it's not my speed, but just wanted to bring up one point, Shelley Trampetti, I represent ZO- Shelley Trampetti, I represent Zayo Group. They're out of Plymouth, Minnesota, and they are primarily putting poles up right now for Sprint. And my only concern is just to kind of drive home what Donovan said about co-locating on existing poles and possibly having a Verizon or Sprint, you know, co-locating on an existing pole. Typically, when we replace poles, which almost always happens because existing poles are not structurally sound, to hold what maybe is a light standard, and then also adding our equipment. So, almost every time, we're replacing the pole. And the pole that we're designing is designed to hold your light standard and to hold our equipment. It's not designed to hold several carriers' equipment. So, I mean, maybe going forward, if you have several applications coming in, as this becomes more prominent and prevalent, as it will, that would maybe be a point where saying, hey, can you guys work together and put the fifty-foot pole up? You know, would that accommodate both of you? But Jay was right, typically, where most carriers want twenty-five to thirty, thirty feet for their equipment, do they want to go fifty feet? You know, height isn't always better, especially for small cells. So, you know, you're trying to stay lower to the ground, you're trying to cover maybe a capacity issue at your Walmart out here, right? So, you're not trying to get higher, you're actually trying to get more, you know, lower to what you're trying to cover. And again, you know, the tallest hill isn't always the best location, as you might think it would be. It really often isn't. So, I think that's probably the only point I wanted to make. If you have any questions to that, I'm happy to answer.
So, you're stating, basically saying that it's one carrier per pole?
That's what we're going to propose, right? We're not going to design a pole unless it's required, you know, by, by planning, that's going to hold multiple carriers. I mean, it's just, it's not like a hundred and eighty-foot monopole that we're throwing out at the edge of town. It's going to be, you know, require a conditional use permit, you're going to say you need to design this pole to hold four carriers. It's not that type of situation. These are very small thirty-foot poles that, when we design one to replace what you have there, it's going to only be designed to hold our equipment and your equipment. Because you're asking carriers to invest a lot of money in replacing your pole, and to ask the carrier to say, please design this to hold two carriers, and that second carrier may never come in, and do you really want a fifty-foot pole, or do you really want a thirty-foot pole, you know, on Broadway? You know, what's going to look best for you, and what's going to provide, you know, what the carrier's wanting? So, we, we all want a win-win situation. What, what do you want, and what do we want, and how can we get to the best solution? Is a fifty-foot pole the best solution? It may not work for two carriers. It's a pretty close proximity to each other, and the poles just aren't designed to hold two carriers. You know, we just.
I think my preference would be I don't want to have a pole every ten feet for every provider.
And I don't think that you're going to see that happen. I mean, I, I'm clearly not saying that's for sure not going to happen, but in the smaller towns, you're not going to ha, you're not going to see, like you would in downtown Minneapolis, where there's a pole, you know, every, on every block, and the carriers are trying to get around each other and get their, you know, their, their poles up. When you look at the smaller towns, you're trying to, what the carriers are focusing on is the need. You know, what's the public asking for? What are their customers asking for? You know, hey, we're not getting good, the coverage is horrible inside Walmart. When you get into the back of the store, it's horrible in Home Depot. When you get to the back of Home Depot, you got nothing, right? So, that's what you're getting, and the carriers are getting the phone calls going, why can't I get, why can't I, I can't send a picture of this doorknob in the back of Home Depot because I can't get a signal. So, a small cell outside of a Home Depot, outside of a big box store like that, it's going to carry that signal further into the store for you. So, you're not necessarily going to see all these poles of small cells going up everywhere, like you think, right away. I just, in the smaller towns, it's just not what they're looking, it's not, it's just not what the carriers are looking at right now. So, I think that your fear may be a little, a little premature. I'm not saying what they're going to go for a year from now. We know how technology changes so quickly. So, who can say? But, right now, I, I can't speak for, of course, any other carriers, but, you know, what we're looking at is, is capacity. It's getting coverage out there that's just not reaching as far as it should be. And, you know, we're trying to, to just meet the customers' requests.
Are there other questions for the speaker?
So, because of what you said, where, where the poles being so close just because there's more than one carrier that wants that coverage in that particular area, I mean, is that something that should be regulated? Or is that going to create difficulty? I mean, any regulation creates difficulty, but.
And Jay's probably much more educated on this than I am, but I didn't think that Minnesota's League of Cities statute allowed limitation of poles. I, I don't think that you're going to see a pole here, and then ten foot later, there's another pole. There's just not that many carriers. So, when you want to, when you have a small cell need, you know, you have something called a search ring that your RF group at a carrier comes up with and says, hey, we need coverage right here, and it business big ring in the city. And you need to find us someplace in here. So, you know, we're all going to go out, and we're going to look for, you know, an existing light standard that we can possibly replace, or an Excel pole that we can replace. Or if there's nothing, that simply, we just can't find anything, there's no poles, then we're forced to put up a standalone pole that is owned by the carrier, and it's just going to be essentially, you know, a right-of-way permit, or an encouchment permit, or whatever Public Works requires to put a pole in the right-of-way. A standalone pole that is owned by the carrier, not owned by the city. So, you know, we always want to work with the city to make sure that everybody's happy. If you have a beautiful decorative pole, you know, I've seen Verizon, they came up with a wonderful, beautiful way of getting that small cell on top of that decorative pole, and I was very impressed. I mean, it was a very nice job. What they came up with, with the lanterns, and then it just, you know, they just extend the top of that lantern pole up, and it's all very stealth, it's all painted a match. If you didn't know what you were looking for, I don't really honestly think you noticed. I've missed him before, and I've had to go back out.
I did not design that.
So, is it reasonable, is it reasonable in the state that you guys always try to use a current pole location first and foremost?
Yeah, absolutely. We don't.
That's not even.
It just depends on what's available, yeah. I mean, if there's something, I've had situations with Excel Energy where they would not allow, they have a certain type of pole, and that's all there is in that whole ring, and they won't allow it replaced, and they won't allow it ever to be attached to or replaced. So, then we're stuck. What are we going to do now? That's all there is. So, then we have to go to, to the city and talk about, you know, putting a standalone pole in the right-of-way. And really, you know, nine, tens out of ten, that goes right to Public Works, and I just have to put a right-of-way permit in. And here's my drawings, and here's my structural, I want to put it in this right-of-way. It's a standalone thirty-foot wood pole, and they may say, no, I want a steel pole. Okay, you want a light standard on it? Yes, we do. And that's really, and you guys will probably never even see that ever happen. There'll be no reason it would go to planning commission. It would truly just go to Public Works for a right-of-way permit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I have a question. How, how typical, what is the typical height for an antenna that you would put up on an existing pole?
Oh, yeah, so these are.
And, and how often would you go fifty foot?
Oh, for an actual fifty foot, I haven't seen any fifty-foot poles. Mostly they're, go ahead. I was going to, mostly they're thirty feet, but.
Well, a street.
We probably should, Jay. It's probably the best thing. We can just do this together. It's probably easier.
We're looking to get educated.
Shelley Trampetti, we've met many years ago.
What was the question?
Well, yeah, is it?
Oh, fifty foot, yeah, so the fifty foot would be when you're in a low spot. You know, that, it may be that the only place that's available, that spot where that, where that property line makes a T with the right-of-way line, maybe that's in a low spot, and maybe it's ten feet below grade, and you really don't want to, you know, you don't want to reach far beyond the dip that you're in, that would be an occasion, but I.
But if you go on an existing poles, streetlight poles, utility poles, they're not fifty feet high.
No, they're typically twenty, twenty to thirty feet tall. Most of the antennas end up at about twenty-five.
So, you're asking, do we typically replace an existing thirty-foot light standard with a fifty-foot pole?
Well, I want to know how often you go up high, fifty feet, or, or do you typically just go on those lower poles?
We go on what's, we go on the lower poles. We, we probably have to, Shelley's right, we probably do have to replace them because they're oftentimes, you know, the pole's skinny. And that you're adding, you're adding sail, you're adding, you know, something that'll catch the wind, so you need to have a stronger pole, thicker wall, a little bit, you know. You need a little bit thicker wall, so they have to be redesigned to support the facilities. Replace it with a similar-looking, you know, same-height pole. That's typically what we do.
And does state statutes say that local, local units of government have to allow up to fifty feet?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what the state statutes say.
Statute says, the statute has a fifth, has a hard fifty-foot limitation. There was a carrier that testified that they would like a much taller ninety-five foot, and that was, that went down.
Can the local unit of government be more restrictive on that, and say a thirty-foot limit?
Excuse me?
Can the local unit of government be more restrictive and go thirty feet maximum? They have to allow fifty?
Yes, up to fifty feet. It's actually a little bit more complicated than that. It's up to fifty feet unless the existing structure is already taller than fifty feet. Then you have to allow replacement of that existing structure at the, at its current height. So, if you've got a seventy-foot pole, like a, like a, you know, where I've seen these is where you've got the really high one light standard that lights a whole area near a, like a freeway interchange. Those kind of light standards, maybe one of those is replaced with another tall one. But, you know, nobody wants to be that tall anyway. I don't know what the point is. Twenty-five to thirty-five feet, that's the number. In the Midwest. They don't have cliffs.
Well, a commercial area would be one thing, but going through a residential neighborhood with fifty-foot-high poles would not be compatible.
No, there'd be no reason to, and, and it wouldn't satisfy, it wouldn't survive the conditional use permit process. I mean, you know, we might be able to come in and, and put up a, you know, a pole that's in the right spot, that's a relatively decorative pole, that may or may not have a light on it. Some cities don't like lights in their, in some residential neighborhoods. Some neighborhoods don't like the lights. So, maybe it would be just a plain pole with the equipment at the base, an antenna on top, one of those things that you drive by, you don't even notice it. The casual observer wouldn't even think twice about the fact that there's a pole there that has no apparent purpose.
Well, in my mind, I'm trying to figure out a way to eliminate the use for a conditional use permit. But perhaps the height of the pole is one reason to have a conditional use permit, and maybe the separation issue is another reason to have a conditional use permit.
Well, I, might it suggest that, that any pole over the height of existing structures in that district, or pick some height, any pole over thirty-five feet tall, or thirty feet tall, is a conditional use permit, and the others are not. If you want to encourage carriers to build short poles,
Right.
Tell them they don't have to come in for a hearing, and you won't get tall poles.
I agree.
But the state, the state statute does require, if you are going in a residential neighborhood or a historical district, you must get a CUP. It must go through the city.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't say that?
It allows the city to, to impose a conditional use permit, but it doesn't require it.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, it's permissive. It's not requiring, it's not mandatory.
And, and Donovan, the way we've drafted our ordinance and the conditions or the standards for residential areas versus non-residential areas, almost every performance standard is the same, except for the last two.
Yeah, well, let's, Ms. Trampetti is here.
Yeah, are you guys done? I'm happy to.
All right. Any other questions? Anyone else wish to address this issue? Seeing no one come forward or close the public hearing, it doesn't mean we may not have questions for our esteemed experts out there tonight. So, Mr. Black, you have something?
No, I think we're on, I think we're, I, I, I'm just, in my mind, I, you know, I think we've got a situation where we've got to adopt an ordinance. I don't know if we're going to be able to do it tonight. But, I mean, it's, it's, it's handed down to us from the state, and it's what everybody has to do, and we're trying to be prepared for our change in technology out there that we all want, and it's coming our way, and we've got it, and we're trying to address it. I'm struggling a little bit with this, whether or not we ought to provide or require conditional use permits in, in single-family areas or residential areas. I, I think we could be inundated with applications for conditional use permits if we, if that's what we're requiring. Excuse me, I'm just thinking that if we can just build the standards in clearly upfront, so that it's regulated through the staff, through the, the new collated agreement in Public Works, let it be. I mean, it's, it's, you know, we've got streetlights, we've got stoplights, we've got emergency vehicle blinkers that control the, the lights, and, you know, we've got all kinds of things in our right-of-ways. We've got cameras in our right-of-ways, we've got all kinds of things, and one more antenna, I'm not sure if that, you know, it's, it's what's coming our way, and I'm not sure that it has to be a land use planning issue for conditional use permit, is the only thing I'm thinking. But, this issue of the height does warrant, kind of turn on something to me, that, you know, if we had, if we, if it allowed, if the state says you got to allow fifty-foot height in anywhere, well, if they came through the residential neighborhoods, and maybe a lot of other parts of the city, and started putting up poles that were fifty-foot high, that, that kind of, that could be a little, little.
My, my nickel opinion, and I'm kind of on page for you, I don't want to see all these conditional use permits either, but I, I think if they're latching on to a current pole, I, I think we're go, we're good to go. It's a, to me, it's kind of a city thing. You want to put a pole in, you visit us. It takes care of Eric's neighborhood. It takes care of the heights at that point. Because there's a lot of above-ground utility in this city. I mean, there's only a few neighborhoods that have below ground. So, I don't think we're looking at huge amounts of CUPs. But, I'm not a wireless guy, so I'm not really sure. But that would be, I'm with you, Mike, that I think that some kind of a cutoff to allow some flexibility so we don't have to get them all with some pretty good definition would be. I would support.
Mr. Chairman? The ordinance that you have here, is this League of Cities ordinance? I mean, do they have one that they are, you said you used it as a template, kind of? But, I mean, what, what kinds of things were changed from what their structure was?
Well, at first, they'd started off with the, you know, Bolton Mank took a first look at it. You know, someone, you know, who's more skilled than I in actually, you know, adopting, you know, a, this kind of land use control. And I've, I've reviewed, it was months ago, I did review kind of the difference between, you know, what Bolton Mank sent over and the League of Minnesota Cities, you know, model ordinance. I don't recall those changes. But, the things that I know where we did change do relate to the the conditional use permit, you know, conditions for residential areas, or areas with single-family zoning. And some of that is intentional, that, you know, that it's not really in the city's interest to have more poles, more things in the right-of-way. Drivers run into them, snowplows do. You know, if there's a kind of maintenance, city needs to work around them, whether it's, you know, it could, you know, working with you know, drainage, or lawn mowing. But, within all this, there is no prohibition, there's no, we're not, unless we're talking about, you know, something higher than thirty-five feet, which is our CUP, you know, threshold. You know, they could go on private property. So, they could go in neighbors' houses, or they can go in commercial, you know, parking lots. And, and I think that, you know, for me, there's some, there's some intention to actually, you know, make it harder to go into residential areas in the city right-of-way where we can, you know, state statute allows us for that, so that they're outside the right-of-way. And, you know, even, I know it's brought up that, you know, there's a lot of places where it's not a single-family use, but the zoning, you know, allows for that. I mean, there's, you know, all the acres of agricultural areas, there could be poles needed there, and they could be outside the right-of-way. The city doesn't need at least money, at least money can go to the private property owners. And I'd rather have that situation in so that, you know, we, we encourage them to go, you know, outside the right-of-way, in one, in one way we can. That's, you know, putting a separation requirement, or, or a CUP requirement on those, those kind of poles.
But then, at that point, it's a condition use permit for a tower, is it not?
Well, it's a condition use permit for a small wireless facility. Then, if it goes, you know, on a tower, then that's, you know, additional set of requirements for, for towers. Then you have, you know, you have fall distances, you have, you know, setbacks from essential structures or property lines, that sort of thing.
Dennis?
Dennis?
You know, I wanna, I wanna move this thing ahead here, but boy, it's just, I did, there's just so many different facets of this that you just see potential, you know, problems arising, I think, in the, in the future, particularly, I mean, this whole, I mean, because it's new, I mean, we, we don't really know yet how this whole density and pole spacing thing is, is gonna work. I, I don't, don't mean to take anything away from our experts, but I didn't sense a real strong, you know, well, this is how this really needs to be, you know, because of the, the technology. But, um, I don't know, I just see us revisiting this on a fairly regular basis over the coming years, um, as, as density and, um, becomes a, a greater and greater issue. If this technology, you know, if this remains the technology of choice for getting coverage, I mean, I, you're preaching to the choir when, when you tell us what you can do with a cellphone, I think all of us know that, and, but, um, and, and I recog- you know, I recognize what's happening in culture and, um, this, you know, self-wireless device is a, you know, is part of our culture, and, uh, it's a cultural, you know, it's a thing that's giving direction to culture these days. And that's, that is what it is. I'm not here to preach for or against that sort of thing. But I, I, I am concerned about this whole density issue, and I, um, because we can't yet point to a community where they've had this, to deal with the density issue, you know. It makes no sense. If, if nine-hundred feet doesn't work, then there's no point in, you know, from my standpoint, there's no point in, you know, setting up the ordinance that way. You know, I, but, um, probably should have done more research on, on this, but it would be interesting to know a little bit more about the technology here, so that, because I, I think that this density issue is gonna be the core issue when it comes. I think that I, I, I'm an architect, and I, I know that we aren't necessarily having people, and I don't mean this as an insult, but where design isn't first consideration, you know, where efficiency, where costs are first considerations, that's, that's sort of, I, I understand. I live, you know, I live in the same world as, as everybody else. But I believe that this density issue is gonna be the core issue here, and we're gonna, it, it, it isn't us, just us, that's gonna have to struggle with it. I, I think the whole, our whole culture is gonna have to struggle with it, as we place more and more demands on this. And I, you know, sitting here tonight, and, I mean, this isn't the first time this has come before, I mean, we've gotten, we've had certain ask, you know, we got the tutorial on the basic system here, I don't know, what, three, four months ago, or how, six months ago, however long it was, ago it was. But, I don't know, I just don't feel, I mean, it's not a reason not to, to vote, to go ahead with, with the ordinance here, but I, I, I just don't think we've dealt with the density issue the way that it's gonna have to be dealt with. And I don't know what the answer is. I, I, I just don't know enough about the technology to be able to say, this is how it should be, or that, that's how it should be. And neither, but by the same token, I'm not willing to leave that completely up to the industry. I'll just leave it at that.
I don't think that the language we have is ready for support yet tonight. I, and I hate sending this back to staff and back to us and back to staff, but I'd rather have a better ordinance in a couple weeks or a month than put a bad ordinance and then have to try to change it later. Some of the things that are just easy ones for me that need to be added is, like, aesthetic components, particularly in our residential areas and our developed commercial area, Broadway, or, I, I think, I think staff understands what my concern was, however that's labeled, I don't care, but that's, where cities invested a ton of money, I think we should have aesthetic standards on that stuff. As far as CUPs, I don't want to see a ton of them come back here either. We'd have meetings going on until eleven o'clock at night, if a whole bunch of these came into town. I, I don't want to open the door and not have any review, and I think, like, the most amicable thing to me, and I guess I, our attorney would probably need to look this part over, is the, um, the piece that says, "Build it on an existing pole," fine with it, I don't really care. If it's, um, on a pole that is less than the height of existing poles in that area, I'm, I'm quite fine with that, with, like, administrative review or staff review, um, as long as there's enough, uh, enough leeway in there, where if they're not comfortable with it, they can bring it to us and set that trigger. So those are the big ones for me. There's lots of other pieces I don't like in it, um, that I quite frankly don't think we can do anything about because of state statute. And, you know, I, I, I'd rather have an ordinance than no ordinance, otherwise state statute basically just... Then, then having no ordinance is much, much worse, um, in this particular instance.
Mike?
Uh, I, I think Eric has just summarized where I would, where I'm at. I, 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 I think if we take a look at, well, staff prepared this ordinance, and, and you were hoping that we would adopt it tonight, or recommend adopting, and does this go to City Council? Once, because it's only code amendment, so the City Council would then review this proposed ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm looking for a planning commission recommendation, but, you know, most of all, I want something that you're comfortable with, and, I mean, I think our assembled experts here probably feel the most urgency about, you know, adopting something.
Well, I'll just echo, I think, what Eric is saying, and I, I, I would, if we, the more we can limit the conditional use permit category, the better for me. And I don't know if we do that by height, by height of existing poles in existing areas, and any, any poles over the height of existing poles in general in an area, and I'm using the word "in general," I know that's not good to do, but, um...
We do.
Maybe a thirty, thirty-foot height limit, anything over thirty-foot, uh, requires a conditional use permit. And then this separation thing. I think if we can close in on a, on a, an agreement on a three-hundred, three-hundred to nine-hundred-foot separation, it'd be nice if we could just get to one, and maybe three-hundred is a standard, maybe is okay, maybe three-hundred's okay. I, I, I don't know if that, if there's anything wrong with three-hundred, in my mind, but if, if we can just make one standard group of regulations for all districts, I would favor doing that. And then some trigger that allows it to go into a conditional use permit, probably based on height, I suppose, or, or maybe the separation issue, but...
I think we're close. I think we're close.
Donovan, on your ordinance, it, it says "any new wireless." So if we have a current pole, every, I don't know how far Lake Poles are on Broadway, let's say they're two-hundred feet apart, those would not be considered new, right? By ordinance, they're existing poles?
They're existing poles, right, right.
You could put a carrier on every two-hundred feet, then, no problem.
You could, yes.
Now, if there were no poles in the hood, then I got a problem, where they're all gonna want the same corner. Is that, am I understanding this correctly?
Correct, yeah, I mean, there's, there's, we haven't seen it yet in Forest Lake, but there is kind of a, you know, land grab, you know, kind of a, you know, Yukon, you know, gold rush kind of, you know, mentality, I think, to get to the right places, because, I mean, a lot of, you know, the signals are there, you know, the RF studies are gonna show some similar places that, where they want, you know, where these wireless facilities should go.
But you're talking strictly new additional poles, not current poles in the hood or downtown anywhere else. Those are all good to go as is.
Yeah, and we can't, by state statute, we can't, we can't limit the number of wireless facilities, we can just limit the number of wireless structures in the right-of-way.
Not new structures, not new poles.
Yes.
Not current poles.
Correct.
I think I have that part clear.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I guess my concern is that the, the League of Cities has, they put together a recommended ordinance based on the state statute. So we're taking that and having Bolton-Mink, those guys...
Draft our own.
Find some things that are wrong with the city's one and, and suggest changes, and they're in this, correct?
Correct.
And then we have another one from Jay that has some things that aren't in here that they feel are different, that aren't incorporated in this.
Right.
So, I guess my, my concern is, is, are we trying to reinvent the wheel here? I mean, why, why, why isn't the city's, the, the League of Cities ordinance okay?
Um, I don't have a, I don't have an exact answer for that. I mean, essentially, we are inventing the wheel here, you know. I can, I can, I can, I could, you know, another, a future planning commission meeting, you know, show where the changes are. But, you know, Jane Consey, the same, you know, same consultant for our comp plan, looked it over, and, you know, taken from other, you know, other communities, she made the changes. And I, I looked at those, compared them months ago, I'm sorry, I don't have, I haven't retained those details.
Well, I just, I just think that it's not proper for Forest Lake to be this way, and then Columbus be that way, and Hugo be that way, and, you know, how the, how does the industry work with all these little quirks?
That's why they went to the legislature, the state statute.
Yeah, yeah, to make a statewide deal.
The city is a big landlord, I mean, we have something like a hundred-and-forty linear miles of roadway, and they could all have, you know, they have poles on them in some form, or could accommodate more, and, so they can come and deal with one entity rather than, you know, many, many different, and, so it's, it's a real efficiency, you know. So, I mean, it is one different, you know, rule for all of thirty-six square miles of Forest Lake or for Columbus, but it is one rule, not, you know, not one different rule for every nine-hundred feet where they could put a, a pole, for instance.
But I guess I'm concerned about, if, if it's not practical to have one every nine-hundred feet, it's wrong to have that in here.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I did say that, she has seen greater separation distances, but, I think that's something we can, we can look further at and get, get a better handle on the technology, but I think that, you know, technology will change, um, and nine-hundred feet might be, you know, real minimal in the future, too.
So now that I've given you a number of suggestions and input, are you, are you good for tweaking this all up and working with the powers that be?
Yes, sir.
And based on that, I think a motion to table.
I would second that.
All those in favor, some of the five of saying aye?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries, do you need a date?
May twenty, yeah, I think the date is good.
What day you got mine?
A month.
Four weeks?
Yeah, four weeks.
Good for everybody?
Yeah.
So...
June eighth?
For our, our June thirteenth meeting, that would be a... It's a weird month, because there's five Wednesdays. Does that sound reasonable?
It sounds good.
Four weeks?
Yeah.
And staff will consider the correspondence submitted by the attorney.
Greatly appreciate all your comments and your education tonight, as we all learn. First one I found fascinating. I don't know why, but it...
And now?
And now we'll get to the most exciting thing, is, the next on the agenda is...
Findings of fact?
Findings of fact that a proposed land exchange between the city of Forest Lake and Fenway Investments. Donovan, this is yours?
So this is a follow-up on a motion made at the last planning commission meeting that basically set the stage for, that the, the planning commission had findings that there was a consistency between the disposable, disposal of the, of the four-point-two acre, four-point-two acres to Fenway Investments was consist, is consistent with the, um, the, uh, comprehensive plan. And so this is basically the, the language I was seeking, um, to, to put before the planning commission. It's crafted by the city attorney, and staff's requesting that planning commission basically reiterate and, and reconfirm their motion from the previous planning commission meeting.
Questions for, do you want to take a minute to read it?
When, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Not to interrupt your reading, but, um... What about the possibility of, of this kind of thing, where we have complex motions or complex events or applications to consider? Just making this part of the application package, coming up with a, um, a motion, you know, I mean, basically what this is, is a properly worded motion, the way I see this. And I'm just wondering if, if it would make our process, I've talked a little bit to Donovan about this from time to time, if it would make our process a little bit more streamlined here, if, um, I mean, if it's a variance to change a setback from twenty-five to fifty feet or something like that, we don't need a, a, a model motion, but, or whatever you want. And this could be easily set up, I mean, you could prefix it with a motion to deny or a motion to accept, so that you wouldn't have to go through, you wouldn't necessarily have to recraft, you know, have a, a, a long extended motion to deny versus to approve. But I, 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 I'm just wondering if we should somehow work that into, because I feel, you know, I feel much more comfortable seeing this here now, and, and knowing that we can confirm that this is actually the motion, you know, this is what we're actually saying on what was a rather complex, um, actually, a whole set of motions.
I think I agree with that, except for that we tend to make changes, so if you have a, a canned piece to work with...
Well, you can still, you can, you can still, you can still edit it, you know, but ha- but having a framework, you know, to work with, particularly on complex motions, I just think it makes sense. And I like this.
Eric, did you?
It's more a question for, for staff. The, the motion is regarding the planning commission, but the signature at the end is the mayor. Is that intentional?
Yes.
That's all.
My experience is it's not uncommon for a planning commission to take action and asking the staff to prepare the appropriate findings of fact after the motion, because you, you never quite know what the motion's gonna be or where you're going with something. Now, staff sometimes can wordsmith a, a typical findings of fact that would help us in, but not knowing which way the planning commission is gonna go with a piece of action. It's, it's not uncommon to, to recommend approval of a certain item, and then subject to staff, typically the city attorney, preparing the appropriate findings of fact. That's, that's done all the time.
Yeah, if we're gonna do that, then we, we need, we need to specify that as, as the planning commission. I, I've been to...
I think we did.
Yeah, we did on, in this particular case. But I've been to, I, I've done numerous projects in, in the town of Brooklyn Park and the, uh, the, the town of Plymouth, and they come with prepared motions, many times motion to accept, motion to deny, they're all written out ahead of time.
Yeah.
And, and, and they could still be, um...
Changed.
I'm not trying to make more work here, I mean, there's gonna be plenty of work, plenty of additional work here with all these applications for these, these mini-towers.
No, I mean, this is something I, you know, I apologize, I, you know, I wish I had this last meeting, so, I mean, it's, that wasn't my intention, I didn't achieve that.
Are, are you looking for a motion to approve this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to, to recommend acceptance and approval of the findings of fact as prepared by staff.
I would second that.
Motion is seconded, discussion? Any none, all those in favor, somebody by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries unanimous. Thank you. We've moved to the exciting other part. Donovan, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do. And this one is for, was it Gary? Tomorrow night, city center, community room upstairs, 6:30 PM, the neighborhood meeting for the Third Lake Estates, minor preliminary plat application, it's the 10-lot subdivision that you, that you reviewed. We have the neighborhood meeting tomorrow night, 6:30.
It's one up by Aqua, right up the hill.
Correct.
Is that the, yeah, small little subdivision, about 10 lots that are, yeah.
Yeah.
And.
Is that recovery if five of us show up?
It wasn't noticed that way, so maybe if you could, maybe just a couple of you.
I'll restrain myself.
elective representative or.
Were there a lot of issues with that? That didn't look like it was.
I don't, I don't, I think we're.
It's just a neighborhood meeting.
Live up there and they're not happy with the unpaved road and I think that's going to be a major discussion.
Perhaps, we'll have, we'll have further discussions, we'll have discussions about it when it comes to forward planning commission.
I plan on attending.
I do, too.
We look forward to your, I look forward to your feedbacks.
I'm sure you do.
Anything else?
I'll have to, I'll say that we, I've had a misunderstanding with our consultant and who I thought who was preparing the, the drafts and she was, says now that she was waiting for me to deliver something else and so we're still preparing the drafts for the, for the comprehensive plan.
Oh, okay.
So we'll not be reviewing those at the next planning commission meeting.
Commissioners, anything else? The mayor?
No, I'm the newly appointed representative for the planning commission between the liaison to the council, filling Mike's position, so he'll see a little more of me around here.
So last meeting we had Mara Bane, you introduced?
No, I don't believe so.
She was here the last meeting.
She was the last one, she was here today, too, but left early, but.
We'll figure it out.
Sounds good. I'm glad you're here because you, you heard all that small wireless facility conversation.
And he needs to sign a form.
Oh, yeah.
Chair's looking for a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Thank you, commissioners and staff for all your hard work this evening.